Right, Melody, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, May 16th Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. I see we have a quorum, so we can get going here. Under Business Confirmation and Modification of Meeting Agenda. I think we updated it with one new Mr. Meeks coming on, but other than that, I know of no other changes. Jim and Gretchen, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. You've all received Jim's meeting notes. Any comments, corrections? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the meeting notes?
I'll move, Craig.
Thank you. All those in favor? Posed, extensions, the motion carries. Have you all had a chance to look at the April 18th and May 2nd minutes?
Yes.
Any changes, corrections? Hearing none, could I have a motion to accept both sets of minutes, April 18 and May 2? Thank you. Second, please.
Second, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor? Posed, extension, motion carries. Thank you. New applications. First up is Gary Meek, 399 Mill Road. This is for site plan review for an HVAC installation. Mr. Meek, are you with us?
Don't see, I don't see him in the room.
All right, what I'm going to suggest, since we have time as we move ahead to the second new application. I see Warren is here. I believe Warren is involved with this one. Is that right, Warren?
Yeah.
Okay, so let me move ahead and we'll come, we'll circle back if Mr. Meek shows up. This is Grace Bible Fellowship Church, 6959. That's all right, I can.
Got ahead of myself.
6959, Route 9 North, Site Plan Special Use Permit and Wetlands Permit Proposed Edition. So Warren, I'll turn it over to you. I guess.
Yeah, Rod Morrison is with me here for the LRC Group Engineers, and I believe Wayne Kreider, representing Grace Bible Fellowship Church, is or will be joining us as well. This application, this site, I should say, has been before the planning board before. A few years ago, there was an application very similar in scope at that time, though we were adding a partial second floor of the new addition to provide classrooms. Since that time, the applicant has decided they really don't have a need for that many classrooms. So essentially, the application is to effectively double the footprint of the church, not to increase the size of the congregation, which I'm sure they'd like to do, but simply to provide more facilities for the existing congregation, which I think has been relatively stable for some years. The intent is to provide a large fellowship hall at the north end of the building for activities such as annual harvest dinners and so forth, or indoor athletic activities for members of the congregation, things like that, gathering space, but not primarily designed for any other purpose. And then there are a couple of Sunday School classrooms proposed for basically facing Route 9, and on the other side, a larger restroom facility right now, that's sort of underserved, and a larger kitchen to serve those dinners when they have them, with a new entry between the two pieces of the building. So that is really the scope, and again, the footprint has not changed, I don't think much at all, if at all, since it was last reviewed by this board a few years ago, but other things have changed, mostly to do with the site and to address stormwater septic and all those fun engineering things that Rod Morrison is going to go into a little more detail about. But, so that is the, the scope of the project. There's an outdoor play area proposed to the north of the building. I'm saying the north, it's really probably a little more east there, and, and just outdoor, outdoor activity area. But this, this is accompanied by reconfiguration of the parking lot, including some bank parking, which, which Rod will talk about. And again, addressing stormwater and site septic system issues. I believe a variance will be required, and I think Rod's going to address that too, but that's the overview of the project. And with that, I guess I would ask maybe Rod to give a synopsis from the engineering point of view.
Sure. Thanks, Warren. Hey, everybody. How are you? Yeah, the site plan looks very, very similar to what we've worked on for several years. The addition, as Warren has pointed out, of the, of the meeting hall space right there. The vast majority of that is a large, a large gathering room. We worked through with the Health Department, and it's just as well to point that out first, because it ties into the parking, that that capacity was nearly a direct match to what the capacity of the sanctuary hall is. So 180 patrons is the number. The addition, in their case, of a commercial kitchen changes our Health Department requirements, but in terms of building capacity, Health Department's agreed that with statements from the church that the intended use is, as Warren is describing, events, in a, in a peak moment, events for, say, like a church Christmas event, something like that, potentially a wedding of a congregation member. Our, our usage would be by parishioners. So in the front of the building, we, and actually, not only in the front of the building, but in the entire property, we underwent land contour change permit back in 2014, built in 2015, I believe, to construct the ball field, which is wonderful. Also did other efforts on site to improve the drainage around the property. Again, thanks for the zooming around here. That all went well, fine. We corrected and helped move water from Route 9 out around the property to hopefully facilitate better soils conditions, which proved out to be the case when we did our soils test with the Health Department in 2019. The existing parking area, as shown in this picture, is a great big mass of pavement. There's lighting behind the parking area and on the side, of which we intend to keep it all. When you look at the parking calculation for the new expansion, and that's on the site plan sheet, we generated a number, we generated a table that showed a total number, and we applied at the time, and I think we originally created this, geez, Warren, correct me, but back prior to the land contour change permit, a concept of a shared parking percentage. We, in discuss with this board, a shared factor of, say, 50%. Ultimately, at the end of the day, we are arriving at a number of total spaces required, being very close to what's, what is on the property presently. And that's, that is, seems to fit with what the church intends to do. Again, where this is a little different, it's, it's a special use on a existing non-conforming parcel. No one can just come in, reoccupy as a commercial use and reuse the space. So the parking calculation is specific to, to the use on the property. The church has indicated to us that they anticipate that with the hall, they would use the same sort of parking, same amount of parking that they do now. So the challenge that we encountered, which creates a lot of site work here, is when we create a drop-off handicap parking and code compliance for accessible parking, it triggers really a regrading of the parking area, unfortunately, which carries around, carries all the way across the existing lot. So we've created, and what's shown here in that grayscale, are 70, 70 spaces, same as the sheet, as the table shows, and then we bank 38 spaces. But when we went through and realized that we were going to have to regrade the existing parking area, again, I say unfortunately, we've tried not to do that. It occurred to us that, well, we would like to propose bank spaces. Let's remove the existing spaces which are down closest to the stream corridor. And you'll see there are 18 banked down there in that location. Yes, those are existing spaces. Again, if we're regrading and the whole area, why not remove those and put those into the banked parking? And I think that long-term, even if there was a need to build additional spaces, those would be the last ones we would choose, because that's just a great spot to have the pavement go through stormwater practices and cleansing practices which don't exist presently. So that the application proposes bank spacing, yes, and also as a part of that proposes movement of paved area and built area away from the wetland and flood plain. So I hope the board thinks that's positive benefit we, we do, we do here. But nonetheless, the, we have a, a calculation of bank spaces, 38 spaces, based on the numbers that we have in there. The area of disturbance, because, because we've had to rebuild the parking, is 2.23 acres, I believe the AAF says. It, our numbers in the AAF include the parking as if it was built. So the stormwater is designed as if all the parking was built. We didn't take any credit for that at this time. I wouldn't mind working with the board's representative to reduce our, our paved area a little bit more if we can going forward. I mean, we're showing a 24-foot aisle width standard around the new parking area on the northern portion over there. I think that since that's one way we can reduce it, but nonetheless, we've tried to create a plan that's, that's as compliant as possible. So with that, we've designed a stormwater system, stormwater compliance from the DEC. We've got a septic field in the front, which is compliant for the entire facility, based on what we agree to with the Health Department. It replaces the old septic system in the front yard. We've got increased landscaping in the front. We had done landscaping originally, and some of it took back in 2014, 2015, some of it did not. So we've got some supplementation in there. Again, as far as lighting goes, we didn't, we were feeling that the existing five lights in the back parking lot are, are more than adequate. There's no reason to light up that area anymore than it is presently, so we're intending to keep those. All I would say about those is there are three in the back. You'll see there by our little S curve, which is a stormwater practice. We've left them in place behind the, the current parking. If the board is supportive and is in agreement that that, those parking spaces would be never built or potentially the last ones built, we might suggest that we would move those up closer to the existing pavement. So all in all, I think we've covered all the bases on a, on a parcel that's been very geologically difficult for our client. They've been established there for a really long time and have a large investment in the property, and as everybody knows who drives by there through the summer, they have several events where tents are out and so on. So the addition of this expansion and a, a gathering hall and a few classrooms is something they've been after for years. So I think, barring specific questions, that's it. Warren, back to you.
No, I think that, I think that's correct, Rod, and I, I don't know, I don't know again, if Wayne joined the, the call, or if he has anything he wants to add at the moment about the intent of the congregation, but he has assured me and Rod many times that they don't see this facility as being designed to be rented out to others for events. That's not their intent or their desire here. If that makes any, any difference, it's purely for the use of the existing, existing congregants and any new ones that happen to join, but it's not, it's not seen as something to necessarily earn money for the church, just serving a need for a, an indoor space for, for fellowship activities. And the plan there shows the, the existing sanctuary on the right, a new entrance within, within the older part of the building, and then the, the new wing with some classrooms, bathrooms, a kitchen, and the fellowship hall at the left-hand side there.
Okay, thank you, Warren. Jim, do you have comments?
Yeah, I have a couple and a couple of questions, so I can get right into them. There is a wetland on the property, as Scott said, and the parking area is, is right adjacent to it. Actually, it's within the wetland buffer. The new parking, if, if we bank those spaces, actually reduces the amount of impervious area that's within that wetland buffer, so I did want to note that. But I did have a question, and it kind of ties back into your comments, Rod. I didn't know exactly what you had planned for bank parking, if it was just going to be used as, you know, as if it's going to be paved in the future, if you're proposing it as, as, say, grass, grass pavers, or some type of reinforced, you know, grass area that people can park on. And that was one of the thoughts I had, given that it is in the wetland buffer area, if that would be something that would be, well, particularly for the ones in the wetland buffer, that would be something that would be considered. It's, you know, some graph, grass papers or something. I don't know if pervious pavement would make sense, given the wetland right there, if that would, you know, result in anything, or if it's already so wet that the pervious pavement wouldn't really gain you anything. But just some considerations like that, being in that buffer area. But again, it did reduce the overall amount of impervious surfaces there currently, so that was a good thing to see. But I don't know if you have any thoughts on.
Just whenever you're ready for me to answer, I will.
Yep, yep.
Considering where it is and understanding for years the church's operation, and in my mind, really believing that it's never going to be built, what I would like to do is remove, remove the pavement that's in that area, remove any compacted subsoil, restore it to grass presently, and then at a time that, if sometime in the future, somebody deemed that it needed to be built as parking, it would need to be excavated and have the understory and understructure of actual parking. So what we would like to do then, is like I said, is pull out everything that's there that's compacted, turn it into lawn, and then have it really function nicely as, as, as an improved buffer towards that wetland.
Yeah, and you know, if you're looking to move the lights, but still retain, you know, the ability to potentially use that in parking later, you know, you'd have to look at your lighting standards and things, but it does seem like at least one of those lights could be kind of moved to the right, where you kind of swing down in the curve and then come over to the bank parking.
Two are easy to move, and we don't mind moving them, but we didn't want to, we didn't want to assume for potentially might be perceived as our personal benefit, just sliding them forward, but we'd love to move them forward. I mean, the poles and the bases, it's not hard work. It's just, it's part of what I perceive as a restoration, nice restoration of the area into lawn. So again, they would commit to in the future someday, moving them back, building parking, if for some reason that was necessary. I don't, I don't, we just don't believe that at all.
Yeah, well, you know, if they were willing to give up, you know, a space or two, you could even just make it a parking island, keep the light there. And then it wouldn't have to be a sunroom at all. So just, just two thoughts there. I, I do believe you'll need a variance for the building coverage, as you mentioned, so I think you covered that. Just wanted to mention that. I didn't see any information on the plans about the, the building, on lot coverage. I only saw building coverage. So if you can provide a number on the lot cover, overall lot coverage, we typically like to see that in the chart. Shouldn't be a big deal, but just have that information added. Warren, I saw on the EAF, there's reference to a historic stone church on the property, but I didn't actually see any details.
It's next door. It's actually in the adjacent property to the, to the north, east, along Route 9.
Adjacent property, okay, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. Just a couple more. I saw on the entranceway that's coming in, you have proposed the kind of, I guess, the box here for the, for the truck traffic coming in and out. Is that something that the, the, you know, visitors and their regular automobiles will be able to get through and pass? Or is there an issue there, because we don't have pavement? Just kind of looking at this from the construction, for the term of the construction.
Yeah, we have graphics on the drawing that are things that would be standard in an erosion and sediment control plan, knowing that the pavement would need, in the period of time that that pavement would need to be reconstructed. There is a tracking pad placed there at the edge of where the existing pavement would be cut, and the new pavement would be ultimately put in. So there is a gap in time. And there is a sequencing that we haven't figured out or talked about with the church necessarily, about the era of when, when that is rebuilt and how their patrons might access the church. So that's not thought through logistically, but the point of that being placed there is it's where the existing pavement ends and the new pavement ultimately begins. Obviously, that would be removed at a point in time when everything is paved.
Yeah, no, certainly, I was more concerned about, you know, the, you know, if I'm going to be able to get in to, to the site during construction, if that's in the main driveway, you know, just to be able to drive your cars in and out.
Yeah, yeah, no, when that, when that parking lot gets rebuilt, it's a, it's a total rebuild, so we would need to consult with the church as to how they might like to do that at that time, and maybe they'll, maybe they'll do something elsewhere in that period.
Okay, and then the only other thing that, that I kind of caught my eye is that I noticed some of the grasses and perennials that were proposed can be fast spreading, or some could potentially be toxic. It's not necessarily a problem, it's, it's somewhat common, but if, if you can take a second look at the choices that were there, just make sure that they're all unintended consequences with what you're planning, that it's not going to spread invasively and take over where you don't want it to, or maybe have it, you know, a toxic bush somewhere where kids, you know, might touch it or something on the way in. They, they have their place, just want to make sure we're, we're doing the things the right way.
We'll cover that with the landscape architect.
Yep, but generally, I think that was it for me. Also, just a couple of questions.
Okay, um, planning board members, questions or comments? Craig?
Yeah. Is there any subsurface disposal or storm drain, either from the existing parking lot or from the existing building or from the proposed parking lot? Are there any pipes under the ground that daylight anywhere?
There, if you can flip through the grading plan, potentially, the there is in the corner, if maybe we go to the existing conditions plan.
Sorry, which, which plan would you like me to go through?
Yes, early on, yeah, I think it's right after the cover sheet.
Right, that's interesting.
Yep, that's existing conditions. There is storm drain outlet right about where the cursor is that collects water around the existing church, largely from the front yard, which comes in there off of Route 9. That was a construct based on the recon, land contour change plans that were done six, seven, six or seven years ago. But the existing parking lot has no treatment. The soil throughout there is, is clay. So that water, in our understanding, really just runs out in that direction across the parking lot, comes out in that corner. I think, I'm pretty sure that the, the kind of extension of the wetland delineation line is a result of that outlet being over there on the other side of the parking lot. Our proposal, however, because we have to comply with the DEC stormwater regs, expands the area where it shows playground right there into a bio-retention area to bring as much of that water as possible over in there, and then against the parking, we have a in DEC terms, a stone diaphragm and, and a grass swale to provide treatment before that water goes into, into the creek. So.
Okay, is that also?
Is that also going to include the downspouts for the roof of the existing or the proposed addition?
Yeah, I haven't personally evaluated the existing church. The downspouts coming off of the proposed expansion, we would run into our bio-retention area.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Yep, sure.
Other planning board members? Okay, Jim, I guess we're ready to look at the procedural resolution. Okay, Jim, you want to run through it?
Yeah, so a draft procedural resolution, accepting the application and supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board, as by just in the public. We'll classify this as a type 2 under seeker. Schedule a public hearing for?
June 20th.
20th and 6:15. We'll send this to the CAB, given what I just heard from Warren, I don't believe we need to send this to HAPAC, so we can straight, scratch that off of the resolution. And we need to assign planning board members for a site.
Who would like to make a site visit?
I'll go.
Sean, who would like to go with Sean?
Oh, hello.
Craig, Sean and Craig will go. Okay.
Yeah, I just note that I won't be here on June 20th, so unless Rod wants to handle the public hearing on his own, which he might not, or might not be available to do, I would, I would have to ask for a later date for the public hearing.
I, I would prefer that the, the full team be here.
Right, I understand.
Unless you want me explaining your architecture, so. Changing it, actually.
That will take you out, that will take you out to July, Warren. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, Gretchen, what's the July date?
I'm looking the 18th.
Okay, all right, so the resolution will read July 18th. Sean and Craig will go. Pretty much summarizes it. Could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
So moved, Edna.
Thank you, Edna, second.
Second, Sean.
On all those in favor? Posed, extensions, hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you, Warren. I hope you're going on a vacation.
I am for a change.
Good for you. All right, next up, as Mr. Meek arrived, Jim?
I don't believe so, and he may not be Melody, in which case, if you'd like, I can probably run through it, but just let me know.
All right, well, we'll continue on and we'll take that up last then. Next up, Grinnell Street Properties, Grinnell Street, Site Plan and Special Use Permit, Replacement of In-Ground Swimming Pool.
Okay, that's still me, or me again, I should say, representing the applicant. I don't know if the owner's present. But this is a, an application to basically put back on the ground an in-ground swimming pool on virtually the same footprint one that was there many years ago. It's a somewhat unusual project, although there is another pool just further down Grinnell Street, further to the north, I should say, and I think at one time, there might have been a third one or associated, or at one time associated with the properties across the road. I think, in fact, it could have been one time that the properties connected with the tie line across the road, and I don't think that's the case anymore, because Grinnell Street is a public street, but there were several properties that had smaller properties sort of on the bluff, if you will, overlooking the Hudson, and this was one of them that had a pool, and so the intent is to put a new pool in. It's again, very, very similar. I think the older pool had a slightly different shape, a lozenge shape. This is just a rectangle. But that is, that is the substance, so this is not typically a primary use for a parcel, obviously, but it is one of the sort of pre-existing non-conforming, as already many things in the hamlet of Rock Cliff. And I think there's only officer determined it was reasonable to put a pool back in, since there had been a pool there at one time. I don't know that there's much more I can tell you about it. We had topo checked. In the process of having it resurveyed, we found that the, the northern property line actually changed a little bit in the applicant's favor by a few feet, but that doesn't really change substantively the application here.
Thank you, Warren. Jim?
Yeah, I mean, I took a look. It's, it's a little unusual proposal, but given, you know, as Warren said, that we are in the hamlet, you know, setbacks and things like that are generally set by, you know, neighboring properties, looking at the existing conditions of the surroundings. I really don't have any issues. It's going in where essentially an existing pool is, and I believe, is it filled in, Warren?
It was filled in at one point, yes.
So kind of taking out the one that's filled in and kind of putting another one back in. Didn't see a lot of issues with it. Noted that might be worthwhile, considering some landscaping around it, although it might be tight up against the road, I'm not sure, in the property line. But that was really about it. Didn't really see anything else.
Comments from planning board members, questions? Okay, hearing none at this time. Jim, do you want to put up the draft procedural resolution?
Draft procedure resolution for your consideration. Accepting the application and supporting documents is adequate for the review. Classifying this proposed action is type 2 under seeker. We will send this to the CAB and WAC for review. This will also go to HAPAC, because it is in the historic district. We will schedule a hearing for, was it June, June 20th?
Can we do July 18th again?
Sure.
For Warren's request. I'll send it to county planning and need to delegate planning board members for a site.
Who would like to go to Rock Cliff?
I can go.
Edna?
Joe, also.
And Joe, thank you. All right, Jim, does that cover it?
Does.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution. Thank you, Edna, second.
Second, Joe.
Second, Joe, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, extension, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks, Warren.
Thank you.
Next up, Nora Brackus, Nine Williams Street Site Plan and Special Use Permit for a Proposed Edition. I believe Nora, I see Nora's iPad is here. Nora, would you like to let us know what you're proposing unless you have someone else here to speak for you?
I'm Steve Portini. Can you see me in the meeting?
And some I see your name.
Yes, so I I'm the builder acting on behalf of Nora and Jurgis.
Okay.
Okay, so the proposed addition, like we did submit a floor plan also, is for a new bedroom bathroom on the first floor of the of the existing house.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I can't see. I don't know Zoom very well, so I am, at least I'm here listening to you.
Okay.
Well, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Anything, anything else you want to say, Steve?
Um, no, other than, like I said, the the house was a three-bedroom house. It has since become a two-bedroom house, even though we're adding a master bedroom and bathroom. We're not changing any of the design criteria for the existing sewage disposal systems.
Okay, Jim?
Okay, so my notes referred to what Steve just mentioned about the number of bedrooms. The addition is proposed to be in the backyard, but this is a corner lot. It is located on well, I'm sorry, it's a corner lot. But again, we are in the Hamlet, so the setbacks and things are typically looked at in terms of neighboring properties and an impact on neighboring properties. I did mention I didn't see renderings. The renderings were in there. That was a mistake. They're up on the screen right now, so we do have the rendering elevations that were provided. But I didn't see anything on the color. I think in the pre-conference discussions, we talked about the color would be the same as the existing house.
Correct.
There now.
Yes, our attention is is to match all the siding, window trims, color roofing, everything that's that's on the existing house.
Yeah, so here's one of the pictures that was submitted of the existing house right now. So other than that, you know, this will this will go to H A P A C for for their review, but I don't see necessarily any planning issues with the proposal. But I did just want to ask what might happen with the vegetation that you can kind of see off to the right here, the bushes and things, and how the contractors will get access. Are those going to come down to get access? Are you going to come around the other side of the house? And if so, are there plans to kind of reinstall any of that landscaping that might come down along the road?
The issue is, is the 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 new bedroom addition is going to, it won't be any closer to the property line than the existing living room that you see in the middle of this picture. So that there's really, unless we plant on the right away, there is no room for, you know, for vegetation in front of the house.
So the existing vegetation will remain?
No, it has to come out because it's
Oh, it has to come out.
It it is where the the addition is being proposed.
Okay, I got you. Okay.
But the vegetation on what's already the standing there just hasn't sprouted in the winter picture there. And that really isn't the front of the house. That's the side of the house.
Right, right, understood, but it understood, but it does front on Kelly Streets. That was my question. So we'll change the that look from Kelly Street because that vegetation will come down.
Yeah, I mean, just can be planted. I would recommend, you know, a lower type shrub or hedge type natural barrier there. But again, we are twelve inches off the property line, so there's not a lot of room. So the other thing that our tent is to actually add windows, which if you look at the picture also, there's it's just a blank wall, so we want to bring some character back to the house and have some windows that will actually face on Kelly Street. We're in the process now looking at some fire-rated windows. If that's not possible to get a fireplace rated window that's architecturally medium with the house, then we are going to do a faux type window with shutters on it to match all the existing trim and then have a set of shutters that would look like the windows just closed up.
Will we have the details of that going forward?
They should be on the one of those
The, yeah, the elevation shows. Let's see, where are we?
Not that one.
Now, there should be another plan.
Yeah, another page.
There we go. So this this elevation, if you look at the north elevation, shows two windows on the north side. Again, initially, they were, you know, intended to be just dummy windows to give the detail that matches the old house. And then there's also a window on the on the Kelly Street side of the house, which is
East.
East, yeah, the east elevation. So we're going to add two windows on that elevation also to 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 bring some character back to that that blank wall.
Okay. Jim, anything else?
Nope, that was it. Again, I think a lot of the the design element discussion may come from H A P A C. But not for me in terms of planning, again, because we're in the Hamlet, there's some flexibility on these types of things. Now we know what the plan is for the existing vegetation, so
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Yeah, the issue is, if we do put windows in, they have to be fire-rated because we are, you know, within five feet of the property line. So both sides of the addition would have to have fire-rated windows and actually is will be a fire-rated wall in the addition.
Yes, I would think the planning board might want to see those. I think H A P A C would probably want to see the proposed windows in terms of the design. Just putting that out there.
Okay.
Questions from planning board members?
We see a floor plan?
Yes, I did submit a floor plan.
Didn't see it here. A floor plan that shows the rest of the house?
Uh, no, we just did a floor plan of the addition.
And there was another plan, Steve, that we had where it showed where the bathroom and the bedroom would be.
Yeah, that that was the floor plan.
Yeah, I don't see it up there.
Yeah, give me a second. I'll I'll see if I can find that.
Okay.
Still looking. I have the site plan, existing elevations, cover letter, pictures. I don't know. I don't think I have. I think I've showed everything I have.
I'm I'm simply suggesting that when we see a bedroom added, we typically see a floor plan for the entire house.
I mean, I do have a floor plan in my file. I assumed it was part of the our package, but I guess it didn't end up in the package.
Well, that's all right. Let's just make sure we get it in the package going forward and maybe you could have that available when people come on the site visit.
Sure.
Okay. And would get it to Jim and Gretchen so that it's included. Any other comments from planning board members? All right, Jim, we have a procedural resolution.
To do. So again, draft procedure resolution for your consideration, accepting the application, supporting documents is adequate for the review. Classifying the proposed action, excuse me, is type two under seeker. This project will be referred to the Conservation Advisory Board, the Waterfront Advisory Committee, and H A P A C, as we are in historic district in the R C O. It'll go to county planning. We will schedule the public hearing for, this is going to be June twentieth.
Yes.
June twentieth. And we need to determine who would like to do a site visit.
Who would like to make a site visit?
I'll go.
I'm sorry, who spoke up?
Michael.
Oh, Michael, I didn't see you. Welcome, Michael.
I'll go.
Michael and Edna. Okay, thank you, everyone.
All right.
Will we be notified when the site visit is? Because I'd like to be there also.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, very, very nice to know. Well, Michael and Edna will be in touch with you to arrange the site visit. Who do you want them to get in touch with, Steve or Nora?
Steve. Steve, is that because you um?
Excuse me?
Is that okay if they get in touch with you?
Oh, yes, yes, of course. Yep.
Okay, okay. All right, so that's how we'll handle it. Anything else? Hearing none, could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
So moved.
Second, Edna, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, tension, the motion carries. Thank you.
One quick question?
Yes.
The June twentieth, that'll be a a public hearing?
Yes, it will.
Okay, perfect.
Will that be Zoom?
As as of this moment, right now, yes, we'll have to wait and see what happens.
Okay.
Okay.
And then Gretchen will be in touch with via email as far as what we need to have together for the twentieth?
Yes.
Because there was mention of a floor plan for the whole house. Is that necessary or just the addition?
I think you should add the site or the floor plan for the whole house. You you said you had it in your file.
No, I I have a floor plan for the addition. We have not drawn up or did a floor plan for the the existing house. I didn't think that was necessary.
I I think I've heard some expressions that it would be helpful.
Okay, I mean, the previous meeting we had, there was no floor plan of the existing church, just the addition.
Well, the previous meeting didn't include all the planning board members.
Okay.
Although there was a floor plan, we but that's not relevant, but there was.
All right, are we all set then?
Okay.
Okay, last, well, almost last, under new applications, Wendy Maitland, six thirty-six River Road, site plan review to install a pool. Okay, I see Wendy is with us.
Yes, and I'm Christopher Schmidt with Need Group, representing Wendy. We're the ones building the pool for her.
Okay, why don't you tell us what you'd like to do?
So what we'd like to do is put in an eighteen by thirty-six in-ground gunite pool with a proposed patio around it of approximately three hundred fifty square feet. As you can see with the current setbacks, we did have to go through zoning and did obtain a variance, given that it's a challenging lot with pretty much a pre-existing non-conforming situation, everything being outside of the current setbacks. In regards to planning board approval, we're just seeking a site plan approval to locate the pool on the on the property as is shown. Since our zoning board meeting, we have gotten the topography of the property as requested. We are, it is a historical property being that was built before eighteen hundred. We provided some details of the patio as well as the fence that will be going around the pool as is shown there. Thank you. We also have some renderings towards the end of the packet. Well, first here, sorry, some photos with some painted lines of where the pool will be to show the existing garage structure as well as the vegetation around the pool space. And then the final section of the packet is the renderings of what we're going to be installing with the pool, the patio and the pool enclosure fencing.
And do you, has the variance been approved already or are you still before the board?
No, we have received approval from them.
Okay.
I believe it was attached to the application. If it wasn't, I can certainly provide that.
I can confirm that they've received approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jim, comments?
Um, yeah, so I think this one is has been pretty well pulled together. The pool is generally screened from view by the in the roads by the outcropping along River Road, the existing house, the garage that's there, a line of trees along one side of the property. This has been looked at by the Z B A. The only real question that I had is that on the fence details, I think it's just a minor clarification. It looked like the total height of the fence in some places was up to seven feet, but I I think, Chris, it's because this black line here represents where the ground would be for that thirty inches. So if there's any way we can just just simply maybe add to this plan, I don't know, to just label that as as brown or something like that, just to clarify it. Like I say, I was pretty sure that was the case, but just to make sure that that's clear for the future, if anyone ever comes back and looks at it.
Sure.
Or or even just a note of some kind of, see, it's already, you know, stamped and signed, but whatever we can do to clarify that, just so that we are sure that that's the case, I think would be good. And then that matches up, obviously, with the with the gate that's shown there in the heights, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll make that adjustment for sure. Thank you.
Not not a not a big deal, just a minor clarification. Other than that, like I say, it's it's well screened. The mechanicals are inside of, they're inside the garage, right? So there's no screening issues there, like we sometimes have with other discussions of of the mechanicals. The variance has been required and, you know, technical specs seem to be met in the notes that I usually require on the plans, so. That's about it for me.
Questions from planning board members? Okay, hearing none, I think we have a draft procedural resolution.
We do. So draft procedure resolution for your consideration, accepting the application, supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board. Classifying this action is type two under seeker. We will send this to the C A B, the W A C, because we are still within the L W R P area, as well as H A P A C, because we are in the historic district. We'll send it to county planning for review, as we would of any site plan review. Schedule the application for June twentieth twenty twenty-two, if that works for you, Christopher.
Yes, it does.
I just need to delegate planning board members for site visit.
Who would like to go?
Joe.
Joe's going. I'll go with Joe. Okay, um, all right, could I have a motion?
Yes, Wendy. Yes, do you know what date that you'll come to the site visit?
No. What we'll do is be in touch with you and and select a mutually beneficial time.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, okay, any other questions or comments? Could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
Same, Shane.
Thank you, Sean, second. Thank you, Edna. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, tension, the motion carries. Uh, okay, Jim, I'm assuming Mr. Meek is not here.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Uh, no, I I don't believe he's he's showing up.
Okay, Gretchen, I guess we'll just reschedule him.
Sure.
And when do we want to reschedule him?
You could put them on June sixth or the twentieth. It's to you. We only have two new ones for June sixth so far and assigned permit that was submitted today.
All right, why don't we do June sixth?
Okay.
Is that okay with you, Jim?
Oh, yeah, no, fine with me, not Michael.
All right, um, thank you, everybody. I think we'll move into the public hearings for this evening. First scheduled is Scott Lyons six nine six one Route nine minor subdivision. You may recall, we have been continuing this one. And I don't believe we have any new information to bring before you. I don't know that anybody is here representing Mr. Lyons.
No, I don't believe so, Melody. I could provide a little update on this if you'd like.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, in talking with the acting zoning enforcement officer and zoning administrator and taking a look at what's going on, as we've discussed many times in the past, there were of outstanding current violent results that have been identified. They're still being worked on, to my understanding, and it may take some time to do that, given we've you know, continued this application several times, that we're not sure exactly when these issues may be resolved. It was my recommendation, and I did contact the applicant's representative. But it's my recommendation that we continue this to an undetermined date and time instead of continuing to do this every month or every other month. And at the time that they do, you know, address these issues and decide to come back before the planning board, they'll just have to re-notice the public hearing, but then we can continue it at that time.
Any planning board members have comments or concerns? Is everyone in agreement with Jim's recommendation?
Yeah.
So moved that we do that.
Thank you, Edna, second.
Craig.
Thank you, Craig. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Opposed, tensions, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Richard Kupchansky, one Chatsel Avenue Site Plan and Special Use Permit for a Tavern and Restaurant.
Okay, Warren Smith, again, representing Richard Kupchansky. I believe that Richard may be on the call and possibly his tenant. But Jim can confirm whether that's the case.
Well, I'm on.
Oh, very good, okay.
Give me one second, I'll pull up the file, sorry.
Okay, sorry, this application is for a, for putting, reintroducing a restaurant into the building of one Chatsel that was last occupied by China Rose, that's the ground floor. And the building size hasn't changed, there's no other changes to the use. A few years ago, I think it was a few years ago, and kind of lose track, we had an application to renovate the upstairs and put a couple of little office spaces in there, and updated bathroom, and at the time, an apartment, sort of apartment for the kitchen staff was removed. Now, we're not doing anything upstairs, we're just proposing again to, to sort of reoccupy the ground floor with a new restaurant. And in the process, make some site improvements that have been discussed with the planning board previously, including the reintroduction of a sidewalk extending down Shatso Avenue, and some new plant material, having accessible access to the sidewalk area from the street there, and really related improvements, but that's it. The other proposed changes, it was subject of discussion last time, to paint the building, give it a fresh coat of paint and a fresh color, and to replace the awnings at the Shatso Avenue entrance, and then at the, along the patio facing the tracks or facing the river with some new awnings. And I think there will be a separate application for a new sign, which actually is pretty much invisible, it's under the awning facing Chatsel, and you literally need to be standing under the awning to see the sign over the door, but I don't believe that's been formally submitted yet as part of a separate sign application, so that will follow, and that's not actually part of this application tonight.
Thank you, Warren.
Yeah.
Jim, comments?
So we did review this and discuss it in detail at the last meeting. Not going to go back through those, I do believe the remaining outstanding issue is discussing color, as we left it from the last meeting. As Warren said, you know, the sign does need a permit, I know it's underneath the awning, but it does need a permit, that's what the code says, so submitting that separately, I think, makes sense, and we'll make sure that that's done to code. So really, it's just a discussion amongst the planning board about the proposal for the color, and then considering an approval application, resolution if so desired.
I know there was some follow, there was a follow-up site visit made. Is anybody present that made that site visit? No. Jim, I do believe that we've received reports from both HAPAC and the WAC, is that correct, CAB?
Yes.
You have those before you, do you want to summarize them?
I don't have them before me, but I can find them, if you give me a second.
Sure. Did everybody get those copies?
Yes.
Well, maybe I don't need to make Jim go through them. Did anybody have any questions or comments based on the submittals?
I mean, in summary, I think that the comments from the HAPAC and the CABWAC were pretty similar to the discussions we had at the last meeting. There's, you know, there's, I don't know, maybe concerns are two words, but there was some concern about the color, you know, being what it is, the dark color, the change from what it is that's there. But also discussions about how it's not necessarily a permanent change, it can be something that can change in the future, so, you know, like a permanent change to the facade of the building. And that it is reversible, and really, you know, just kind of, I think, again, in the same vein as what we discussed in the last meeting, generally speak.
Okay.
And Melody, I would also observe that at the last meeting, we were discussing a dark gray for the building, and the applicants have reconsidered, are now actually showing a dark brown color, which is a slightly warmer tone, somewhat more brick-like than a gray.
Thank you, Warren. Any other planning board comments or questions? Okay, Jim, is there anyone here from the public?
Don't believe so, but if there is anyone, please let me know, raise your hand or unmute your line.
Not seeing anybody, Melody.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Michael, Craig, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, extensions, okay, the public hearing is closed. Jim, I believe we have an approval resolution.
I do. I might have closed it out. Hold on, I'm sorry, I think I closed out my file. If that can be one second. I have a lot of files to run through tonight, so they're in different places.
There we go.
Is it up on the screen now? Okay, I've got the right file, okay. So for your consideration tonight, a draft approval resolution, reaffirming the action is type two under seeker for which according to environment review is included based upon submitted information, including reports from planning board members, HAPAC, CABWAC, we find that the work is consistent with objectives of chapter 125 with respect to the application for special use permit to authorize reactivation of the existing first floor non-residential use as a restaurant. Find the proposed work and intended use is consistent with general standards for special use permits, and would grant the special use permit conditioned upon approval, conditioned upon site plan approval. With respect to site plan approval, in this resolution, we just want to note the number of permitted seats for the establishment must conform to the number permitted by Dutchess County Department of Health, and would find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with town code chapter 125, and approve the application inclusive of the materials and site plan by Warren Temple Smith Architects dated April 22nd, 2022. And we're authorized a planning board chair to stamp sign the site plan upon the applicant satisfaction of the conditions and requirements within six months of the calendar date of adoption of the resolution, which includes submission of the required number of site plans, payment of outstanding fees, and receipt of all other approvals.
Thank you very much. Could I have a motion to approve the draft approval resolution?
So moved, Sean.
Thank you, Sean, second.
Right.
Thank you, Craig. I'll pull the board. Michael?
Hi.
Edna?
Hi.
Sean?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Craig?
Hi.
And I'll vote I. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Steven and Tammy Kershon, 105 Daisy Lane, site plan and special use permit changing the primary and accessory dwellings.
Hi, Melody, it's Zach from KDA here, representing.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. You want to refresh our memory?
Yeah, so since last time, it seemed like we were, we were about at the finish line, but the the board noticed that there was a, there was a field modification onsite, a staircase and a loft had been kind of utilized, since we had some loft space, the clients decided they wanted to utilize that space. So what we did is we resubmitted with that revised floor plan for the, for the studio, which is under construction now, showing the, if we switch the next two pages, I'll show you where that is. Yep, and then this has not appeared to be... Is this the latest submission? I think we have one from...
I believe so, fixed windows.
Yeah, but I think if we zoom out just a tad, I think I have one from May 9th, I just want to make sure the date's right. No, I'm not seeing the staircase.
Give me one second, and I'll see if I can...
Sent that to Gretchen, I don't know if she was up, she was forwarding it onto the board, so I have it, I have it open, if you'd like to share.
We don't, the, I control all the files during public hearing, so. That's, just give me one second, I'll see what I can do. You said May 9th, is that right?
Yeah, May 9th.
I've got it here, I think. Okay, see if that, that's better.
Yeah, all righty, great. If you can just zoom out just a tad, I'll just... Great, so you can see if you, the... There we go, you see that there's a staircase that has been now shown in the main living space, and then if you go to the top left of the page, we have a little loft plan, just simply showing an open railing and a stair going up to a loft. So I believe the board's concern last time was, could this loft be used as a bedroom? We hope this shows that it's completely open to the, to the to the room below, so we're not considering it a loft, we also have a bedroom, we also have a fixed window, so there's no emergency egress similar to the way we handled the other, the other questionable office in the main house, so. I don't know if the board has any other further questions, I know we've kind of, kind of gone back and forth on all of the little items, so I'm here to answer any questions, any further questions.
Thanks, Zach.
Yeah, no problem.
Jim, any questions, comments?
I believe from my perspective, everything's been addressed. The only outstanding question I have is whether or not the new plans have been given to county health, and they've signed off on them, or if that's a process that's going to be kind of ongoing, so I wanted to make sure the town's plans are the same as the county plans. I know the bedroom count, things were all going to be the same, but we should have the same sets of plans on file.
Absolutely, yes, we would ask that that would be a condition of our, of our, of our approval.
And that was going to be the only thing I would say, Melody, is that if that wasn't done, it doesn't sound like it is, that that could be a possible condition. If you're okay doing that, I think it's just a paperwork issue, it's not anything other than that, just making sure our plans are consistent, mainly that the county gets the same plan we're looking at here tonight.
Yeah, we're working on an AS build for you, because, yeah, it's currently being constructed, so it'll be better than a proposed plan.
Planning board members?
How many offices are there?
Let me, let me get that answered for you here. So we have one office in the main house that we've removed a door from and fixed the windows, and then we have
I remember that one.
Right, and then we have this little, this little attic loft kind of, kind of space, so that's the, that would be the second one, in a separate structure. Okay, two total, one in each structure.
Nothing about the garage?
No, not, not, not for, there's going to be, there will, there will be, there will be storage space up there, but, but we're not proposing windows or any, or any means of egress.
Okay.
There's also storage space in the house, right? That stair that we are looking at in the house goes up to a storage area.
Correct, that's a mechanical, a mechanical loft, I plan on blowing, or keeping my fan coil units above the kitchen space, and so that's what that little access stair is going to.
Right, so there are basically three offices, there's one in the accessory dwelling and two in the house.
Well, we were asked to relabel those, so unless I'm missing it, I only believe we have one in the house currently.
Well, what's it labeled? We took the door off of it, it's still an office, right? I mean, not that it matters, but I remember two in the house.
So the second one inside of the house, if you just scroll down a little bit, that one, we were, we were asked to confirm that that is, that is, we've labeled it as a bedroom and renumbered all the bedrooms, so it's, it's no longer an office, and yet part of the entire bedroom count.
Okay.
Other comments? Is everybody happy with conditional approval? Jim, can, have you worked that into your resolution?
I have not, but I will, it would just be a line saying, conditioned upon receiving information that the plans, the county health, are consistent with what's on file, town call.
Okay, do you want? All right, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Could I have a motion to, let me ask Jim, is there anybody here from the public wishing to make a comment?
Don't think so, but if so, please unmute your line, raise your hand. Don't see anyone, Melody.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Edna.
Thank you, Edna, second.
Second.
Thank you, Joe, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, extension, the motion carries. Here is the draft approval resolution. Jim, do you want to just review it?
Can do that. Reaffirming the action is type two under seeker, based upon the submitted information, including reports from the planning board members, that should say CAB, not WAC, on site visits, their information, find that proposed work is consistent with objectives and regulations of chapter 125 with respect to the application for special use permit to authorize work, we find the proposed work is an intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits, and would grant the special use permit, condition of on approval of the site plan, with respect to the application for site plan, find the work and intended use to be consistent with town code chapter 125, approve the application inclusive of materials and plans by Kristin Dorsom Architecture PLLC, and I will provide an updated date there. And we will add a condition in as letter B stating that this is conditioned upon receiving information that the plans at Department of, County Department of Health are consistent with those on file with the town of Ryanbeck. Then we would authorize a planning board chair to stamp and sign the both-site and site plan upon applicant satisfaction of the three conditions there, which are submitting the correct number of plans, payment of outstanding fees, and receipt of all approval of authorizations or patients.
Thank you, Jim. I have a motion to accept the draft approval resolution.
So moved, Michael?
Second, Edna.
Thank you, Edna, I'll pull the board. Michael?
Hi.
Craig?
Hi.
Edna?
Hi.
Juan?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
And I'll vote I. Thank you very much, thank you, Zach.
Thank you, board, appreciate it.
Take care.
You too.
Next up, Fondrelye, 410 White School House Road, site plan and special use permit, mining and reclamation renewal. I believe Mark is here.
I am.
Good evening, Mark.
Good evening.
Okay.
So, you know, last meeting, there were some requests for materials with regard to vehicle trips for the soil mine, just since, you know, prepared a document and sent it to the board for their consideration. And as I mentioned last meeting, I believe that we are complete with our New York State DEC review. They had some comments, they've been addressed, and I believe they're just awaiting approval from the town planning board for the special permit, since both permits are tied together.
Mark, it's John Lyons. Hi, how are you tonight? Did DEC conduct environmental review in connection with the mining permit review renewal?
Let's see, just let me check that, John. I'm just, I'm just looking at documents that I submitted to DEC, it's a, no, it's, no, I believe they, they rely on the town to do that, right, because all my submission for a permit renewal was just a mining permit application, a mining narrative, and so this mining and reclamation plan that you see in front of you now, that's all submitted to DEC.
Okay, so one of the reasons that DEC doesn't want to take action on the mining permit until the town makes a decision on the special use permit is because, you know, they can't take action until the lead agency gets to a certain point in the secret process, does that sound right?
Yes, it does.
Okay. We're looking right now and at the issue of cumulative impacts, and... And as you know, there's a, there's a mine, mining permit renewal and construction of a new access road that is being proposed by another mining organization in close proximity to your client's project. And right now, the planning board has asked me to look into the issue of whether cumulative impacts need to be assessed as part of this review. And we're in the midst of doing that. We're not prepared to give the board an answer tonight. But we hope to be able to do that in between now and the next planning board meeting.
Understood. Is John, and to the board, any other additional materials required from this applicant?
Is the, is the board happy with the short form E A F for this? That's the only thing I would think of.
Planning board members? Jim?
Well, fairly or not, I'm kind of leaning on John to work with me through this. We can probably, I think we can probably work on that. I'm not sure, but you know, if John thinks we can, we can work with that document, I can make it work. And if not, we can only ask for additional materials needed, I would think.
All right. Well, let's take a look and see what the outcome is of the cumulative impacts evaluation that we're going to do. I presume that Mark, the short form E A F spend used in the previous renewal applications by your client?
That's correct, Jim.
Okay.
So John, the only, as I say, the only question I have, John, I think you and I talked about circulating for lead agency. That's something we need to do and identify who those people are and get that.
I think that that's something that we can move ahead tonight. I would circulate, you know, obviously based on the conversation with Mark this evening, D E C should be included as a, as an involved agency. And I would send, I don't know, is there anything, is there any kind of, any permit required, Mark, from the highway department? For the driveway or for your curb cut?
No, the, this has been the access point for the soil mine for the last, oh gosh, well, the last three permit renewals that I've done, John. So that's 15 years. So that's it's, it's, it's a, it's an existing access point. And and actually, I know we touched on the mine, the mining access point a while back because the northern portion of the mine was actually a subdivision that we had done, I think it's in 2018, that created the lots for both the, it's lot 1A and lot 1B that's shown as part of that, you know, as part of the part of this mining plan. So I think that was addressed at that time also.
Okay. Are there any other involved agencies to your knowledge besides D E C?
None, none. It's just, it's, and historically, it's just been New York State D E C and the town of Ryanbeck. And just noting, John, that, you know, typically the, in this case, for the mining permit, the renewal of the special permit has been made coincidental with the, with the D E C permit. So it's, it's, you know, it's a five year period for this particular application.
Okay, thank you. So I think, Jim, you know, we can circulate to D E C and get that going. And I think, Jim, you mentioned to me that the county referral is definitely out and may be back.
Yes. I know it went out. If it's back, I'd have to double check. It is back. Yeah, we received it back and it was considered a local concern with some comments that we went through.
Okay.
Mostly related to traffic. Well, we can just go through right here. It's one sentence. It's related to the increase in concern of the truck traffic. Again, kind of coming back to the discussion. We've had a cumulative impact of the truck traffic. They have the same general concern and suggested, you know, basic truck study. Mark has provided us with information on the truck counts coming in and out, hours of operation, things like that, letter that was submitted. But again, this kind of ties into our discussion of cumulative impact that we've been having.
Okay, great. If you could share a copy of the county response letter with me, that would be terrific. Or is it, is it in the database?
I believe so. I'll double check. I'll make sure you get a copy and put it in there.
Thank you.
I ask a couple of questions, just off the top of my head.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah. Mark, is any additional mining on the site being proposed other than what has already been approved by D E C?
No.
Okay.
It's, I note that, you know, when you're looking at this plan, you know, there's two hatched areas. One with, you know, skewed lines, you know, going through a major portion of the property that that's already been reclaimed. And, and then there's a, there's a boulder line on the outside, you know, and it has with a circle inside the circle. That's LM. That's the life of mine. So you can see that. And then this, this, you know, this mine extent, you know, the land, the ultimate permit extends, you know, a bit to the south. But it's the intention of this applicant that the only, there, there, there may be some additional mining that'll take place in the hatched area that's dotted. And all that, all that to occur is just some enlargement of the ponds. Now, there's a note to the right side. It says, you know, the, the intended use of this property is to remain, is currently agricultural and it's to remain agricultural. And so, as I mentioned before, the northern portion, you know, on the east, northeast and northwest portion of this mine are currently residences of the owners of the mine. So no, there's, you know, just, just to recap, this, this mine has been primarily used for processing material from the Lebowski Soil Mine to the north. You know, and that's been included in the, you know, truck traffic generation that, that I you know, regarding this application of that soil mine is, you know, the intention for Von der Leef is probably to finish that this year. That mine will be complete and completely reclaimed. And so it's just some, you know, some, a little bit of surface mining and some subsurface mining on that, on just a small remaining portion of this property that will occur. And I also know, you know, the owner and applicant Rich Von der Leef was on the last meeting. Just to reiterate that, no outside sales are taking place for the, you know, the sale of sand and gravel to you know, other, you know, other parts. It's just strictly material that's generated from the soil mine is just used for the bond release and their, and their excavation business. That's it.
Thank you.
Michael, did you have another question?
Well, can I interject? So is, is that information, Mark, in the application? In writing anywhere, the information that you just gave us in response to Michael's question?
It may not be, John, and I can certainly clarify. I can enhance the narrative that was included with the application to include that information.
That would be really helpful if you could do that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Michael, did you have another question?
No, I think Mark pretty well covered what I was going to ask about. So I think he pretty well covered it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from other planning board members, comments? Okay. Jim, is there anyone here from the public?
So please raise your hand or turn on your screen. I don't see anyone, Melody.
Okay. So I think based on what John has shared with us and his hope to be able to review this before our next meeting, I think we're ready for a motion to continue the public hearing. Someone willing to make that motion?
So moved, Melody. I don't know to when.
Gretchen will tell us. Gretchen?
June 20th.
Okay. So a motion to continue the public hearing until June 20th. Motion made by Edna is their second.
Second, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, extensions, hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Last up this evening, before we go into referrals, is Grassmere House, 29 Mill Road Site Plan Special Use Permit, Wetlands Permit Minor Subdivision, Country in Two. And I see we've got a whole team here.
Good evening, Melody. How are you? Good evening, board members. Nicholas Kinnon Lewis with Keen & Bean on behalf of the applicant Grassmere House. I'm joined tonight by Tom LaRue on behalf of the applicant Soho House, John Montane with G P I, and Richard Nye of Streamgo, who is designing the wastewater treatment system. This is an application, as you know, for amended site plan approval, wetlands and subdivision, continuation of a public hearing. We submitted our application in February and have appeared at your board's February, March, and April meetings, as well as appear several times before Hay Pack and the Conservation Advisory Committee, both of which sent favorable reports and recommendations to your board. We've also responded to all the outstanding consultants' comments, including most recently on our substantive April 4 submission. And we've advanced discussions with the third party agencies, of which we have updated you previously, and we'll give you an update in a moment as to the current status of those reviews. With all that in mind, I would respectfully suggest, and I know the board had its secret discussion on May 2nd that you'll continue, that this application is in a position for the board to advance its review and potentially, I think, make a decision on the application at your meeting in June. And we are in a position, we would request the board consider closing the public hearing on the site plan and the wetlands application permit and authorize your staff to prepare approval resolutions if that's where the board is inclined to go. With respect to the third party agency reviews, with respect to water in the village of Rhinebeck, we reported that we have had discussions with their staff about the plans and that it was going to be placed for the board's billboards consideration. The engineer had some additional comments, they wanted some revisions made to the, to the plans and comments, and those have been provided. And we've received a comment letter today. And we'll be making another submission to the village engineer for their review and hope that that will be placed on their June agenda for consideration. I will point out that the village water discussions have advanced significantly further than they had been in the past when this board has previously approved the site plan applications. And we think that this is an appropriate condition of approval of obtaining the approval from the village of Rhinebeck can still be made a condition as you have made in the prior five times this project was before your board. With respect to the Duchess County Department of Health and the wastewater treatment system and the water infrastructure, our representatives, Josh O'Connor from G P I, Tom LaRue from Soho House, and Richard Nye from Streamgo met with Mr. Pearson at the site on May 11th. They had a substantive review of the application materials. And Richard will go into this in a bit more details. And they can answer any questions you may have, but it's our understanding that the health department, who is familiar with these types of systems as they've approved in other locations, subject to the typical design review that occurs when it goes through the permitting, had no substantive issues with the proposed wastewater treatment system. With the New York State Department of Transportation, we've made a further submission in response to initial comments we received. And we've received a, what we believe to be the final round of comments, that we will be submitting a response back to them by the end of this week, beginning of next week, and advancing those discussions. We've also completed the wetland delineation that the board had requested. That was completed about a week and a half ago. We will be submitting that to you within the next two weeks so that your staff can review that in advance of your June meeting. And all of those third party agency reviews are items that in prior reviews by this board, you had granted the site plan approval subject to those matters being reviewed by the third party agency. So I would suggest that we are further along in the process than you were several years ago when the board previously grants approval. The last item I'd like to comment on, and Jim, if we could put this up on the screen, is the subdivision. You may recall that we were, the applicant was speaking with the Windiki Land Trust with respect to the modifying the conservation easement. And that was because we were proposing to move the westerly boundary line further to the west, and that would have included some of the lands that were imposed by a conservation subdivision. We were proposing to grant an additional 28 acres in the area of the, along Mill Road by Daz Lane to also be imposed with a conservation subdivision. And as we went deeper into the discussions with the Windiki Land Trust, it became apparent that this was becoming more complex than either of us had realized or thought was appropriate, especially given some of the tax considerations, as well as the fact that we were asking for two separate types of conservation easements. One for Mr. Mench's residential property, of which it's currently on, as well as then imposing one on the Grassmere commercial property. So the Windiki Land Trust had then suggested that, given that we no longer have the need for the moving the lot line and modifying the conservation subdivision, which was originally, if you recall, the genesis of which was locating some cabins in that area. Those cabins are no longer proposed. So we both mutually agreed that these discussions did not need to be advanced at this time. And it was suggested that we not pursue or continue those discussions at this time. So we are not in discussions. It was a mutual agreement. Just in recognition that we didn't need to be focusing anyone's efforts on there. So the revised subdivision you have before you does not alter the westerly lot line. Our subdivision has become even more simpler than it was before. We are only doing the lot merger, the 10 acre parcel to the north, you may recall, that is being merged into the 520 plus acres now. And then, Jim, if you can just scroll down a bit to the south, you'll see that we've now keeping the main westerly property line, we have moved the southerly property line, what I like to say be equivalent 10 acres to the south. So that we now have lot one, which is the Grassmere House main property of 250 acres. And then the remaining, I think it's 273 acres, would be lot two below that new line that we have to the south. So the subdivision now is just a lot merger of the 10 acres. We're respecting the westerly property line, not impacting the conservation subdivision. And we've just extended the southern property line a bit more to the south. So that is our revised subdivision. We will be submitting that formally later this week to the, to the board. And that is why I've suggested the subdivision application hearing should not be closed, but the other two should be. Also, board members, we are aware the board may second review of the environmental impact, environmental assessment form and your review of part two that you held at your May second meeting. We are aware of a couple of the discussions and comments that you have, and we're certainly prepared to answer any that you may wish to ask us tonight. But I also thought it would be helpful for John Montane from G P I to go through some of the larger themes that you had questions about. And before I do that, I was going to ask Richard Nye from Streamgo, just to explain to you the wastewater treatment system. As we saw, there were some comments and questions about how that would work and how that might have any potential impact to the environment that both Richard and John might answer as well. So unless you have any comments on what I've spoken about previously, Melody, I was going to ask Richard to sort of introduce the wastewater treatment system to you and offer an explanation of it.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, Richard.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. So yeah, Streamgo, I'd like to present to you guys, we're a design build company that specializes in water and wastewater treatment systems. We're currently doing the Bellfield project not too far from here. And also, we've completed one over at Sala Ridge. I'm sure everyone's heard. So we actually have four projects right now in Duchess County. One in Orange County, one in Ulster, one in Sullivan County. So we, we just opened a new office in Newburgh. So we're you know, kind of around the area a lot, very understanding of all the, the steps of the approval process and then also implementing and startup. We're familiar with the D E C and D O H requirements and also Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. So all those are being consulted through the approval process. And just so you guys have a little understanding about the system itself, what's being installed here is, you know, what, what's considered to be best in class technology right now. It's an M B R plant, so it's a membrane filtration. It's an MBR plant, so it's a membrane filtration plant. Starts with some biological treatment and then a very fine filtration process. And so that allows us to produce water that meets most drinking water quality standards. So very high-quality discharge, and that's why we're allowed to discharge to, you know, kills like this that would then ultimately go to the Hudson. So very robust system, full redundancy in it. So anything fails in a pumps-wise, there's always duplicity. It's fully automated as well. It has full remote monitoring, so you can operate the plant from anywhere in the world, from any kind of iPad or phone. So when you do have alarming, you can see what's going on and react very quickly with it. Yeah, so a lot, lot of security as well. We have four levels of security into the control system. So we don't have to worry about anybody working their way into the system at all from a hacker stance. So yeah, we try and cover everything. We are operators of plants. We operate, like we carry right now about 40 operators in our, in our company. So yeah, it's a little bit of background on us. The system that's going in here is very similar to the one that's over at Silo Ridge, a much smaller version of the technology that's being used at Bellfield. And pretty much an exact match with the one down in Ulster County, just north of Newburgh. So not sure if anyone had any distinct questions about the system at all?
I have a question.
Sure.
You mentioned that the water that's admitted will be pure. Will it be that state before it goes into, I think there was discussion of a holding pond before that goes into the kill? Am I correct?
Yeah, there'd be a constructed wetland that we'll discharge to and the waters of that quality going into the wetland.
I think that's terrific.
Yeah, it's going to help the area. You know, there's, there's a lot of phosphorus looting from traditional plants in the area that have caused a lot of algae outbreaks on the Hudson and, and other areas in Duchess County. So these systems are removing all that, you know, worry of any, any type of nutrients going in.
Will your company be the continuous operator, maintainer?
We would hope so, but you know, we'll probably be up for tender and we'll see which way it goes.
But it will be, okay, it will be a company such as yours.
Yeah. Yeah, included with our delivery.
It will be there. It will be their company, Edna, just to put that, no question. I'm not tendering this out. It's their system, a soup and nuts. That's why we picked them right through the operation.
Thank you, Tom, for that explanation. Edna, did that answer your question?
It did. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, thank you, Richard.
I guess I shouldn't have let Rich know that at the beginning.
I think he's pleased nonetheless. So, John, I'm going to ask John Montane from GPI. John, I don't know if you want to start off with any other comments or observations on the wastewater treatment system, but if you can just talk to some of the general comments that came up during the board's secret review to help move that discussion along, that would be appreciated.
Right, so just so everybody knows, Nick did share with me the notes that came out of the meeting that you all had to go through part two of the fully AF. And so I'm just going to hit on some of the points that really relate to the engineering. I'm going to start on section three, which talks about water bodies, stormwater, discharges, things like that. On 3A, the comment was, will the stormwater practices, you know, become water bodies? Are they technically water bodies? And I think I can kind of summarize quite a few things with stormwater. We have just recently completed all of the field investigations with CPL in all of our proposed stormwater practices. The original stormwater report was based on just soils data from soils reports. And now that we have the real data, that, that analysis will now be updated and the final version of that stormwater model will be completed. But what has come out of that is the fact that the, the areas that we have are suitable areas for stormwater management. All of those management practices are either infiltration, which is the first goal, try to infiltrate into the ground. Or secondly, dry or wet basins, which are also intended to drain out and dry completely. So they will not be, you know, open ponds that hold water. These are not old-fashioned stormwater basins that you used to see with four bays and wet ponds in the bottoms of them. That's not, not the practices anymore.
Nick, could I just ask a question? This is not your formal response to our review. Is that correct? You will be responding in writing?
We will be. Yes, we were going to be working with Jim and John. It suggested that we have a meeting where we could better understand and clarify those questions and put a formal response together. Yes.
Right, so I just like to keep it at a, as a sort of general review tonight so we don't go into in-depth with every question.
No, that wasn't our intention.
Yeah, I do understand that, Melody.
Okay.
Stormwater was kind of a, stormwater was kind of a big one. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew how we had progressed on that and that we're.
I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that you, you will be responding formally.
Right, right. So I guess the other thing is to, you know, there were questions about erosion control, things like that. And as everybody knows, we have to design all of our systems based on DEC standards and soil erosion. And there will be inspections through construction, and all of that is covered. Though, as was mentioned, the wetland delineation work was just completed over the past two weeks. The boundaries of the wetlands have not moved in any substantial way. And as a matter of fact, one of the wetland areas that had been originally identified by Baghdad near the Stone Barns is actually not there. Our wetland delineator was curious as to why they had picked a sort of an upland area and included it. So that mapping will be coming, and from that, we will update the impact areas and everything else and update the table for, for buffer impacts. We also then delineated some additional lands out towards Mill Road, out by Daz Lane, and that will show up as well. You know, that was part of the mapping that had never been completed before. There were questions on the heating systems. I did want to point that out, that, you know, any of the heating systems that this facility uses will be very small compared to the thresholds that are in the secret documents. And there will be no way meeting any of the thresholds for air permits, air resource requirements, or any of that. Well underneath those thresholds. The last one that I saw really was talking a little bit about threatened and endangered species. And I think as you, as you recall, both the Baghdad analysis and our wetlands and field biologists did do threatened and endangered species review. That was all documented in the original EIS, GEIS, and then in the subsequent studies. And there are no habitats that will be affected by this, and we'll, we'll give some feedback on that. There was a question regarding agricultural soils, impacts to those. And as you see by the plan, you know, the only infringement on, on the existing agricultural fields are on the fringes. You know, the existing roads that go around the southern parking area, which is not a large field. And one of the most important things to note is that best soils for this whole site are on the upper plateau up where the, the 10-acre has been added to the north. And that is not a development area. So that prime ang land is actually protected now because it's part of this project and no longer subject to the prior proposal for a house and a house lot there. I believe that's really the technical ones that were in there, Melody, so that's all I'm going to comment on for tonight.
Thank you, John. And Melody, what I'd like to suggest is that with the board's permission, that, because some of these responses don't lend themselves to a writing. It's more of a dialogue and a conversation and pointing out where something is and then answering questions that would naturally arise from that. So it's more of a fluid conversation than a letter exchange. Is that we meet virtually this week with John and Jim and sort of have that more detailed discussion so that when John and Jim meet with the board next, which I presume will be at your June 6 meeting to review secret, that you have the benefit of those responses. And we can then supplement it with formal written responses, to the extent that's necessary for the record as well at John and Jim's request. Does that seem reasonable?
I would ask John and Jim if they think that's reasonable.
We're both reasonable people.
John, you're muted. Well, I don't know, Jim, are you going to be prepared in time to be able to have that discussion?
Well, I'm not going to have everything pulled together, but if we want to have a limited discussion of identifying where things are, maybe we can do that. I do need a little time to pull it together. It's a little bit of a chicken and egg in my mind, a little bit of this. But yeah, I mean, Nick, we can coordinate offline and see what makes sense, I think. John, you, John, if that works for you, John. I mean, I don't know, I, you know, I, I can talk, but I'm not going to have anything fully prepared by, you know, this week. Still pulling stuff together.
No, and I think we might, let's talk offline, but I think we might be able to direct you to that information pretty readily because we were familiar with it, so we can save you some time there as well. So maybe just, maybe it's a two-step process. A brief one, just to identify things and then a more substantive the following week. But let's talk about that on offline.
Yeah, let's go to something offline. We can figure that out. It sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay.
So Melody, is there any additional information or documents the board would like to ask us tonight while we're here? Or would appreciate receiving from us?
I will ask the board. Planning board members, are there any questions, comments?
I have none.
Okay. All right. Jim, comments?
No, I think they've mostly been kind of covered. Like I said, we have to go through secret discussion. Just kind of answer those remaining questions based on our secret review from the other night. And yeah, that, that's really it, I guess. You know, again, Nick has asked for kind of the consideration of the conditional approval, so the planning board will have to think about that. I don't know if we talked about it tonight or think about it and we'll kind of see where we go.
I think we can take that under advisement. Nick, did you or your team, Tom, anyone, get any indication from Dave Pearson as to how long he thought the Department of Health review might take?
Tom, do you want to speak to that or?
You're muted.
I'm trying to, but he's muted.
Yeah, I got a funny, two to 12 months. So I'm hoping for the two-part and not the 12-part. So my understanding, and Rich knows the, Rich knows the process more, right? It ultimately starts with DEC, goes to DOH, and then ultimately goes back to DEC. What I, what I explained to, to Dave is his colleague is very familiar with the systems of the other project that Richard had, had mentioned. So we left Wednesday's meeting essentially with Dave going to collect information from his colleague. What we were expecting or hope to expect is that they will send a preliminary, I keep calling it a head nod, email to you guys, essentially saying, yes, we're familiar with the system. Yes, it's a proper system, X, Y, Z. And in due course, it'll run through the permitting process. So that's essentially where we got with Dave. I don't physically have the email that he said he was going to send today, but we do expect it hopefully here in the next day or so.
But that was on the, on the sewer, right? Wasn't on the water necessarily. They're running on two separate tracks?
That's on the, correct, two separate tracks. We did, and we did talk about that too, that they would be two separate applications with him, obviously, because they run separate courses. And we talked through both, basically, both scenarios. With the focus, obviously, right now, in my mind, the village water, essentially, that's still in with the village, right? So we need to satisfy the village first. Once we satisfy them, we would then go to Health and the other DOT, I believe, is the other interested agency for that scope.
Melody, I can give you a quick update too on the water. The, the comments that came back from the village really now aren't for fine-tuning. They want to see some additional documentation and detailing on all the service laterals that come off the new main that we're putting in. Make sure that the connections to all the hydrants are in, all the valves are correct, you know, fine detailing, notes on pavement restoration, lawn restoration. So we're, we're in the final stretch of those final drawings. And once Randy from the consultant engineer signs off on it, that's when they'll go to the DOH so that the DOH knows that the village's engineers on, you know, has reviewed everything and it's copacetic.
Okay. Planning board members, any last comments or questions?
So, how, how are we now leaving this in terms of when this applicant is hoping for approval and what's going to happen before that time?
I don't know that we're in a position to have that full conversation tonight. I'd rather wait to see how John and Jim make it out in their next couple of meetings that they're having. I think that will give us more information.
I mean, I, I understand that the applicant wants to move through the process quickly and, and the board wants that too, but it's premature at this moment, in my opinion, tonight, to be thinking about approval when the board has not even issued its determination of significance yet on the SE, you know, on the matter of whether there's an SEIS required. So we need to keep moving forward, but we have to take things one step at a time. We need to get seeker addressed first and then look at whether there are other, you know, anything else in terms of special use permit, site plan, and wetlands that the board's going to want before the board can consider being in a position to think about conditional approval. That's my opinion.
Thank you, John.
I appreciate that, John, but we, we have been before the board and made substantive applications. I'm not aware of any outstanding request or information and believe we've provided all that information. So if I'm understanding you correctly, it's just a matter of then of a board processing and discussing that, correct?
No, I, I don't know the answer to that. I have to rely on Jim with regard to the completeness of the information. I'm just talking about the process. And again, you know, I understand that you want to get to approval. The board wants to move this along in the process, but we have to go step by step.
So then, so we have some awareness. What do you see as the sort of a timing for the next steps?
I don't know with the, you know, we have to resolve the, see what information you're going to be providing. Now, Jim has to pull together the questions that were going to be asked at the EA, you know, coming out of the discussion about the EAF. We have to get that material to you. We've got to get the responses back. And the board needs to crunch the responses and see how they fit into the rest of the completion of the EAF and then decide what, you know, and on the more substantive matter, you know, look at what the EAF part three is going to contain and then ultimately what the determination of significance is going to be. And that's something that could happen quickly if the, if everything, if all the information that's submitted is such that the board determines that it doesn't lead to the identification of moderate to large impacts that the board deems to be significant. But that analysis needs to take place.
So thank you, and I appreciate that. From our perspective, we have provided that information and.
Well, you can have provided it when we haven't asked for it yet. Well, no, I understand the desire to provide it is there.
I think you two have agreed that you're with Jim going to be meeting in the near-term future. And I'd like you to take up that conversation then. We're not going to settle it tonight. Tom?
Can I ask, can I ask one question? At this point, right, and I miss, this is a personal question going through this process. And I ultimately have to go report back to other people, right? And everything that I'm hearing is that this ultimately is going to get dragged out longer. And I guess what I'm, should I be going back to my superiors and basically saying that we should revert back to the 2015 plan? Because essentially, that's a plan that we could act upon, right? And I think you've all seen, we're, we're putting the commitment in to try to clean up the site and inch this along. But the dollars and the options of me inching things along and making improvements at the site that runs out at some point. So I'm just trying to look for some guidance like this. If we say this is going to drag on another six, seven months, my suggestion is going to be, let's go back to the 2015 plan, stop the bleeding. And I'm just looking for like, at least some kind of where this is going. Just from, again, me being responsible to then recommend to security, et cetera.
Well, I, I personally can't answer that question. I don't personally see it dragging on six, seven, eight months, but.
Well, I, I have to say, I object to the characterization of a dragging. We are, the board is working really hard. They're crunching a lot of information. And I, again, I appreciate the desire to move forward quickly, but you need to appreciate the position that the board and the board members are in as well. The board and their, this is not the only application in front of the board. And there are a lot of moving parts to this application. And the board wants to, has to be as careful and prudent with regard to this application as it is with everyone else's, because everybody has to be treated fairly and treated the same. So, you know, I, I understand your need to report to your superiors, but it feels, you know, framing the situation, you know, framing the discussion like that, you know, feels like green mail.
Poor choice of word. Sorry. That's why I'm not an attorney.
I have a question. I have a question, Melody.
Yes, Edna.
What has been proposed is that Jim and John meet with the applicant. What has been proposed is that Jim and John meet with the applicant as representatives of the board. How about if there is a special meeting of the board so that the full board can be part of that? So that questions that members of the board may have are addressed then? To be a hot step and be cleaner and also involve the entire board.
The preliminary idea was, you know, we did discuss this, you know, two weeks ago, and I'm trying to pull together that information, try and fill the hole. And then obviously, if you, you know, as board members had additional questions, you know, we could get to it then. It, I feel like it'd be easier for everyone to react to some information that's provided than maybe have the open discussion on that. And then I'm hoping to pull that together in the next, you know, week or so, at least pull together the information that I think is there. And I'm going to work with Nick to ensure that what I find is what they think is available and get that out to all of you, you know, in advance. And then it's a matter of, you know, yeah, exactly. How do we schedule it? It doesn't necessarily have to follow this track system. You know, we did the initial seeker review off the track for the grassmere house two weeks ago. So I am hoping to pull it together, but you know, it's been two weeks and it's a little bit of info and there's just a lot of moving parts, as John said. So we're moving as quick as we can. I'm really trying to and that, you know, as John said, it's a big one. The board has to decide if you want to do a supplemental EIS or not, which has been a discussion for, you know, a couple of years that I've been involved. When the, you know, the previous application came in. So I'm hoping to get all those answers to you, hopefully it'll, you know, answer all the questions that remain. If not, we'll get that additional detail and hopefully wrap up that part of this so that the board can determine, you know, if the SEIS is needed or not.
And honestly, Edna, I think it's going to move faster with the structure that we're talking about. Is so that Jim can focus the, I mean, the idea is that Jim's going to be able to sort of focus the informational questions down to exactly what was raised at the EAF. And, and then we can sort some of that with the applicant and then just come back to the planning board members with answers and without having to, you know, coordinate a meeting. In the meantime, I mean, if you wanted to join the meeting, you know, we're not trying to keep people out. If you wanted to join the meeting, you'd be welcome to join the preliminary meeting. But I think from a process standpoint, I think if we can move it along in the, according to the plan that's been hatched, I think it's going to move faster.
I would like to join the meeting and perhaps others would like to join the meeting.
I will ask Jim and John to work out the details of the meeting with Nick and then we can figure out how to open it up for others to at least listen in. I'd like to add something just to what Nick spoke about earlier. Nick, you gave us a very good overview of the number of times we've been meeting with you since you've come into this project. And that is all true. Many members of the planning board may not be aware of the fact that you have, you and your team have scheduled and we have agreed to meet with you in pre-conference meetings almost every month in between the regular meetings. So I hasten to say that because I don't want there to be any suggestion that the planning board or the members of the planning board team have been in any way not accommodating to your desire to meet on a very regular basis. So.
I endorse that, absolutely right. It's been a cooperative process. And what you're hearing tonight is just us believing that we've made a number of substantive comments and that we're pretty far along towards getting to where we need to be and recognizing that the board needs to complete its review. So we're trying to find a way to move that along and condense. And so when Tom made a reference earlier, he was talking about the process in general, not the way this application has been reviewed or treated by the board and staff. It's been a good cooperative process. And as you mentioned, Melody, not just with your board, but with a number of times HAPAC met with us outside of the meeting and special meetings. So I don't want to leave any impression that we're not grateful or appreciative or mindful of it. As Tom said, there's just some business aspects of it that we need to have on terms of the scheduling before we commit investments to repairing a lovely butt building that needs some TLC sooner than later. And we might get it there. So it's just trying to make those meld and maybe if I could ask, could you tentatively put us on for June 6th for the secret discussion? And if you don't need it, you don't need it, but at least it's there as a placeholder. And I'm hoping that our internal, I'm sorry, interim discussions with Jim, John and any claim board members would help advance those discussions.
I would defer to counsel. I'm not in a position to make that decision.
For me, for scheduling? I mean, you can put, if it's, if you do that, if you can put it in as a placeholder and if we're ready, we'll be ready to go. And if we're not ready, then it'll be moved, you know, it'll have to be moved to the next meeting.
And we can, there's a lot on the agenda for the sixth, so there's a lot on every agenda, it seems. So we just need to keep that in mind, you know, like, I don't think the process will be as long as the previous, you know, run-through that we did. It's only some, some number of questions, but it's going to, I guess, it's something to keep in mind.
Understood.
It'd probably go on at the, I would assume we put on at the end of the meeting after the public hearings and things, but. I mean, I'll pull the materials together. Again, it's just a matter of getting the materials together and timing with planning board meetings and other things. It's really.
All right, we can do that with the understanding that if we aren't ready, we're not going to take it up.
Appreciate it, understood, thank you.
All right, anyone else I hesitate to ask from the planning board? Okay, Jim, is there anyone here from the public by chance?
Oh, please let me know, raise your hand and turn on your screen.
All right, so we are now have a motion to continue the public hearing. Are we saying June 6th? Is that what we're saying? Somebody help me out here.
Well, the seeker is related, but not necessarily the public hearing, but I guess we can.
Do we, do we have two resolutions then before us or just one tonight?
We don't have resolutions tonight.
No, I mean, are we continuing both the public hearing? What, tell me what we're doing here.
Yeah, well, the public hearing has to be continued and we're going to schedule the seeker. We could do both. I mean, if you want to put this on, you know.
There haven't been a lot of comments, so there should be no problem with continuing the public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay, that would be the June 6th meeting, not going out the month as we have been, correct?
Right, it would take us off the track, but the focus of the sixth will be on the seeker form and then maybe there'll be some ancillary discussions.
All right. So could I have that motion, please?
So moved, Edna.
Thank you, Edna, second.
Sean.
Sean, thank you, all those.
Second, Sean.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Posted, okay, motion carries, thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you, have a good evening.
And we now have three town board referrals before us to wrap up the evening. The first is called the Hamlet. And this is the workforce housing project that has been under discussion with the town board. So I don't know who's going to take the lead here this evening. Was it you, Andy?
Madam Chair, this is Ken Carney. If you don't mind, I'll take the lead.
Not a problem, take it away, Ken.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ken Carney. My son and I, my partner, my son and partner Sean are partnering with Dan Martin and the Housing Partnership on this workforce housing development between Astor Drive and Rhine Cliff Road. The Carney Group develops. We have a construction arm that we build, but most importantly, we manage all of our own properties. We started the company in Duchess County over 30 years ago. And for any questions regarding our hands-on management style, I encourage any members of the board to speak to Duchess County Planning, the commissioner or any assistant commissioners. What we're seeking to do is to apply the recently enacted workforce housing overlay zone. The town recognized the need for workforce housing to create housing at various income levels, various rents. And they adopted a workforce housing overlay zone. This property meets the criteria for the workforce housing zone. And what you have before you tonight is a referral from the town board. This is, the project consists of 80 units, a mix of one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedrooms, 79 or rental units. One is a superintendent unit. Our management style includes an onsite management office. And we also have a superintendent who lives there seven days a week. That's our eyes and ears when the management office is closed. We currently have 22 developments similar to this, mainly throughout the Hudson Valley. And we're very excited about the possibility of working here in the town of Rhinebeck. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the project engineer, Andy Lern, who'll talk about some of the site-specific details. And then he can turn it over to our architect, Mario Salpepi, who can highlight some of the architectural features. Andy?
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, so the site, like Ken said, is located along the western boundary of the village in the town, between Astor Drive and Rhine Cliff Road. It's about 23 acres, consisting, it's all wooded right now, consisting of some steep slopes throughout the site with rock outcroppings. We do have wetlands, federal wetlands, town wetlands in the northern portion of the site as well as along the, in the south, southwestern portion of the property. There's also a small section of the southwestern portion of the property that does have some floodplain in it from the Rhinebeck kill that where it crosses underneath Rhine Cliff Road. The wetlands primarily in the south under the site will not be disturbed. The access to the site, we have an access easement over Wells Manor Drive for primary, primary access to the site, which leads out to Astor Drive. That will require disturbance to the wetland in the northern portion of the property. And we have filled out a wetland application, wetland disturbance application for that. The access road, we have two accesses proposed based on working with the town board. One from Astor Drive and another from Rhine Cliff Road. The, the access to Rhine Cliff was added for two reasons. The town, based on town board input, one was to provide pedestrian access actually down to Rhine Cliff and then eventually to the, to the village. And also they were looking for, you know, access, you know, a second means of access to the site. In talking to the DOT about that, they, the DOT has indicated their preference to keep that as an emergency-only access out to Rhine Cliff Road where vehicles would enter, enter the site only. I know in previous discussions with the board, that may be something that we need to look at. So we're open to suggestions and listen to your comments later on and how you want to handle that. As far as the site itself, oh, one more thing, we do have, the site is archaeologically sensitive. We, based on EAF mapper findings, it was indicated to be such. So we did have a phase one A and one B archaeological study performed as requested by OPRHP. And we submitted those reports along with some additional information. Those reports identified an area just to the, to the west of the proposed access road down at Rhine Cliff Road that is archaeologically sensitive. It's, it was identified as the Darling Historic Site. And basically what we provided was a, an avoidance plan to, to prevent disturbance of that site. Our improvements are staying away from that area. We'll have to provide some fencing around that to prevent future disturbance of that. Getting into the site plan itself, as Ken said, we're proposing 80 units and four separate buildings, one of which will have a community room. Some of the amenities that the town board asked us to look into and we're providing is a pergola, playground, onsite walking trails, some planters for community gardens and I think I'm forgetting something here. Yeah, and the patio, patio areas with seating between the buildings for outdoor use. The buildings are two stories, all of which are walkout basements in the, in the, in the, in the back, which is the west side of the buildings. So for a lawn area and access to outdoor spaces. We did our best to try to make this, the site fit with the, the character of Rhinebeck as best we could, based on the, you know, the buildings that, that, that the, the funding agency actually is looking for in their criteria. So that's kind of how we came up with, with the, the kind of the, the articulating buildings. It also, we are also a little limited based on the site, site topography. The steep slopes are a bit of a challenge to kind of fit these, this, these buildings in place and make the site work. As far as parking, all the parking spaces will be porous pavement with, we're, we're required to have 120 spaces, we're proposing 129. So we're a little bit over, but just about where, where the code is calling for it. The stormwater, stormwater for the rest of the site, along with porous pavement, we're proposing buyer retention filters, some stormwater swales and a dried detention pond at the, at the, at the southern portion of the site. Other utilities will be fairly easy, easily accessible, mostly from the, the, we expect from the northern end of the site. The, the village wastewater treatment plan is actually just off of the other side of Wells Manor Lane. So that's a fairly short connection for us to make. And then water should also, would also likely come through Astor Drive. We have been in contact with the village, village and their village engineer. They're working on a capacity analysis for us. We're still waiting results of that, but based on preliminary discussions with them, we do expect them to have capacity to be able to serve the project. I think that pretty much covers everything that I had to talk about. I'll turn it over to tomorrow, the, the project architect to kind of look at the renderings and the, and the floor plans.
Thanks, Andy. Good evening, I'm Mario Salpepi from Capol Associates. I am the project architect. Overlapping some of what Ken and Andy may have already said, we have four buildings, 20 apartments per building for a total of 80 units. There are 18 one bedrooms, 44 two bedrooms and 18 three bedroom apartments. The entry side of the buildings is the two-story side, as Andy mentioned, from the parking lot and sidewalks. Each building has two entrances, which serve 10 apartments, four on the main level, four on the upper level and two on the lower level at the rear. You can see the rendering here. We went through some iterations with the town board members in, in an attempt to comply with Rhinebeck's design guidelines. The facades themselves, you can see they're articulate in three different planes, which is, is not easy to see in the black and white drawings. And we're using fiberglass shingles on the roof, fiber cement horizontal siding and fiber cement board and batten vertical siding along with aluminum standing seam porch roofs and shed roofs. You can see some of the trim work on the columns, trim work on the windows. And the coloration. We, we also worked with the town board. They requested more muted earth tones. So you could see here the beige and dark brown colors in the fiber cement siding. The project itself, the building envelopes will be Energy Star certified. The project will be LEED certified. Everything on the project, ball fixtures, equipment will be Energy Star certified. Obviously, we're, we'll, we'll be at a high level. Uh obviously, uh we're we'll we'll be at a high level uh as far as energy ratings go. We will be all-electric, uh which at this point is the state mandate. Uh there will be no fossil fuels on the project. And uh obviously, we look forward to working with the with the board and the committee uh for for any any sort of uh revisions to these elevations that they may request. Thank you.
Is that it? Ken, Andy?
Yes, it is.
Presentation?
Yes, it is, ma'am. Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Um Jim, do you want to kind of review the steps that we're looking at here? There's a bit of a back and forth, I understand. Maybe you want to clarify that and then I think we'll open it up for questions and comments from planning board members.
Sure. So um so as Melody said, there is a process. My recommendation is before I mention that is that the planning board review this referral and it is a it is a referral from the town board. This is not an official site plan submission at this time. Um but we review this referral as if it is the official site plan submission. So I need all comments that you think you have on it. Uh I'd like to see if we can get those pulled together for the memo that we would send on to the town board in a couple of weeks. Um so with that, I I have provided you with some comments. Town engineer did submit a letter today. Um and and Ken and you'll get a copy of those, so you can see those after this meeting. We'll make sure to get them to you. But in terms of the process, um again, this is a referral right now from the town board. Uh the concept plan was submitted to the town board for their consideration. They did review it and essentially approve a concept of what you see before you today. Uh that plan is then to be reviewed. By the planning board, by the town workforce housing committee and the waterfront advisory committee. Within sixty days of of receipt of that at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is where we are today, in that kind of the middle of that process. Uh we will provide comment, you with planning board will provide comments, the other boards will provide comments back to the town board. At which time they're going to hold the public hearing on the concept plan, uh discuss any comments that have been received. And make those comments an official part of their minutes of of that public hearing. A secret review only to be undertaken within the process. And the town board may or may not ask uh the applicant to make any refinements to the concept plan. They may act to approve, approve it with modifications or conditions or disapprove the concept plan. And then they have to, same time or sometime in that process, also decide to lay down zoning that meant the floating zones. The workforce housing zone is essentially a floating zone right now. And town board has to, by local law, put that zone down onto this property to make it official. So assuming we get, you know, we get through the process of the concept plan being reviewed, the comments go back, town board talks to the applicant, whatever changes are requested or made. The town board finds that it's to the point they're okay with it and they lay down that zoning on the property, um so this can move forward. Again, somewhere somewhere in their secret will take place. We're in the process of trying to figure out that process. Once all those things have come through and the town board has approved it and it's all laid down. This will eventually come back to the planning board another time for your review as an official site plan and special use permit. Uh my hope is at that time that we're essentially at a point of dotting the i's and crossing the t's that we've addressed a lot of these comments kind of upfront. Um but that will be the official site plan review process that the planning board will have to go through. So you'll see it now, uh you will, the planning board will also see a referral for the, it should see a referral for the uh rezoning. When they lay the zoning down on the property and then we'll see it one last time as the um site plan application that needs to come in. The county planning board will also see the same. They they will get this review three times as well. They currently have it as an unofficial review. But they're taking a look at, they will take a look at it when it goes through the zoning process and then they will take a look at it again as an official referral from the planning board for site. So there are a couple of steps to go through, uh but again, my hope is that right now we can, you know, we can take a look at it, ask any questions you have. Um and we'll put together a memo to send on to the town board with any questions or comments that you have for them to take under consideration.
Okay, so I'd like to open it up to planning board members for comment. Who would like to start?
Well, I have a pretty long list of questions, uh Melody. I certainly don't want to monopolize this time. On the other hand, I suspect this is the only opportunity we're going to have to ask questions, correct?
I I think if I uh heard Jim correctly, this is the time to really get them on the table. So that the town board has um all of their comments from the planning board in hand when they look at this again. So yes, I think, you know, we need to take our time with this tonight if that's what we need to do.
They, based on the timeline um that that Kim took a look at from Granton Lions, I believe the planning board need, unless we want to ask the town board for for some type of extension. Um we'll need to have that comment letter kind of ready to go after the next planning board meeting, the first June meeting. So we only have a couple of weeks. If everyone thinks we need more time, I'm more than happy to ask the town board. If we can have more than sixty days, I don't know exactly how that'd work out, but that's what's in the law.
Well, can we get our questions on the table now, Jim? And then at the end of the conversation tonight, confer with John to see if we need to ask for an extension?
Oh, yeah, by all means, that is definitely for discussion of the of the projects. I want to put out there that the time.
Okay. Um Edna, do you want to jump in?
Sure. Um it's it's kind of difficult to know exactly how to proceed because obviously there have been discussions with the town board. For example, we just heard that the town board asked for more muted colors. So it sounds like to a large extent, this is already. Uh you know, it is what it is and it's kind of already accepted by the town board.
I wouldn't, and I wouldn't say that. I think this is your opportunity to express your own opinion as a member of the planning board. And don't assume that any conversations that have taken place with the town board are binding.
Yes, I would, I would agree with that. And Edna, also, please bear in mind that the planning board has a lot more experience than the town board does in looking at plans like this. And I would encourage you and all the board members to, you know, bring your experience and expertise to bear and your comments and questions. Um so the town board can consider those things.
Okay, well, um. Let me start. Uh the first question I have is, how was the number of proposed units arrived at? I realize that the uh zoning law talks about a maximum of eighty, but why eighty? And why are they all proposed to be affordable versus some portion being middle income and market rate?
Okay, uh if I may answer that. The developments that we've done in the Hudson Valley, they have ranged uh from seventy-two units up to eighty-nine units. We have a project we're breaking ground on in a couple of weeks, the first of its kind in Putnam County. And that is seventy-five units. We have a similar project we're working on the eastern side of uh Duchess County and that is eighty units. So um there are funding limitations uh that we deal with. And the uh eighty units uh is in the code and we feel that the site. Is well-suited uh for eighty units. Um the market is very strong, will support eighty units. And um this is all predicated, of course, on uh obtaining the necessary funding. And it uh it's a uh if the zoning allows eighty units, it's a number that is uh been widely accepted. By the various funding sources. In regards to the middle income, um we have units at eighty and ninety percent as well. Hold on just one second. We have units, we have twelve units at uh eighty percent. We have six units at ninety percent. So that's a total of eighteen units and those rents are higher than the other rents. Those rents are uh for a two-bedroom range from uh nineteen hundred and fifty dollars up to twenty-one hundred and fifty dollars. For a two-bedroom, for a three-bedroom ranges from about twenty-two hundred up to about twenty-four hundred for those uh eighty and ninety percent units. So uh we have the middle income program. New York State has a middle income program. However, it's uh it it normally only uh used in more uh urban settings. So we do, we employ a mixed income model and that's how we wound up with uh what I stated, uh twelve and six eighteen.
But no market rate uh units, correct?
No, no.
And why is that?
Well, it's a. It's a model we have not used. Um there are complications with that. And we prefer the uh to just have some higher units at eighty uh and ninety percent. Um using, the main funding source for this development is uh tax credits. And with tax credits comes a tremendous amount of uh regulation and compliance. And when you add market rate units, they're not to take into the weeds, but they have nuances called next available unit. And it uh it's it's complex. Um the market rate uh has worked on larger projects. Uh you've seen it more in New York City and Lower Westchester. Um where they use an eighty-twenty rule or seventy-thirty rule, uh but uh. That's not. That's not the model here.
I know what I'd like to do, and I don't want to cut you short, but I want to kind of go back and forth. And if there, I mean, I'm going to ask in between your questions, if there's anybody else from the planning board that would like to offer a question, then then we'll come back to you. But I'd like to offer some other opportunities. Anybody else want to jump in or let Edna just keep going? Okay.
Um the the site, as you mentioned, is quite difficult um because of its terrain. And there, I know there has been a request from the town board for more landscaping between the parking area and and the buildings. Um. If there were some way to reduce the footprint of the buildings, that obviously would be helpful. I realize that our zoning law restricts the buildings to two stories. But my question is, if this were increased to three stories, similar to your high ridge gardens in Poughkeepsie. Would that not help to reduce the footprint of the buildings and leave more space available for landscaping or uh community outdoor space and so forth?
I can answer that from a from a site planning perspective. Absolutely. You're absolutely correct. It would definitely reduce the many impacts of the project. Um I I'll have to let Ken and Mario discuss, you know, whether or not the three-story um model would work for this situation.
Yeah, if I may jump in, uh these uh these buildings are walk-ups. Uh so adding another story means uh two, two flights of stairs. Not a model we've uh desired in the past. We we try to stay away from. That extra story with walk-ups.
Uh in in my uh, looking through the internet, I see what looked like two-story apartment buildings with use of dormers in the roof. So that the second-story apartments obviously have a have two stories. Bedrooms are upstairs. Um obviously, that doesn't give you a full third story because you're dealing with the slope of a roof and so forth, but it still adds significant space. Is that something worth considering?
Uh, uh, okay, so you, uh a two-story apartment, but uh AKA a duplex apartment is what you're referring to, right? Uh living space and then bedrooms above. Um I I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to discuss this with Canon.
Mario, I I think um the the comment was more directed where you see, uh let's say, a large um gabled roof, if you will, with dormers. If, am I right, man? Okay, and where um you use part of the uh almost like a half-story upstairs. You know, it would, it would obviously change the design to uh necessitate an elevator. We prefer in uh non-senior developments um to not have elevators. I prefer, you know, two-story walk-ups as Mario uh had has mentioned. Um but um our senior, a lot of our senior buildings are three stories and or three and a half stories actually and and do have elevators. Um but here, if we were to take that that one particular design and work on a dormer group, I think it would necessitate a redesign of the buildings. Right, Mary? Am I correct?
Yes, of course, of course.
The other thing I would, I would mention is um as far as the dormers get were concerned, I think we were showing dormers in some of the earlier layouts, Mario, and then we we changed that. Is that right?
Uh, ye- yes, we had um, we had reverse gables facing front. Uh we we had a. We had a different, a different sort of front elevation prior, uh which, yeah, may may look more like. What Edna has mentioned, but um. They asked to use the shed roofs. We we went towards the shed roofs instead.
So is a redesign of the building, is that within the realm of possibility?
Uh Ken, I'll look at you for that.
I'm going to yield to somebody. Um we uh it uh um we spent a fair amount of time um getting here. So um I. We are um. This is where we are. Uh I think that would have to um. Right, that we started this last, I believe, the design last July and we arrived at this, when, Andy? Early winter?
Yeah, it was, it was early December. Yeah, some sometime around there.
Um I just need to point out, if we add a story, I I will have an issue with the thirty-five foot height. I don't know if the uh the planning, it's not in the planning board's power to. Change that requirement, correct? We would need a variance at that point.
There you, or the town board would have to change the the zoning law.
Okay.
Correct.
However, if there are specific recommendations as to the architectural design, anyone should take that into consideration. The fact that the town board has looked at this and made their own suggestions. And you make a good point, meaning we did not see where this design started. So we are only picking it up here and that should not preclude us from making our own comments about. Uh whether we feel these fit the design standards of Rhinebeck or not. So that's a separate discussion from how many stories, but I would encourage you to comment also as to the architectural design.
I see Craig had his hand up.
Okay, Craig?
Uh, yeah, um I just had a question if this um. If this plays any kind of a role in uh making the village more walkable, are there any kind of uh amenities that would be collateral to this development? Like a a walkway uh over the or a footbridge over the Rhinebeck Kill? Uh was that explored at all as part of this plan?
The hmm, a footprint, a footbridge over the Rhinebeck Kill was not discussed. Uh what was discussed was extension of the of the the sidewalks along um uh that would be West Market Street. Uh you know, Rhine Cliff Road to connect the site to the village. Um we didn't really get into extending it any further than um than that, you know, to basically to where our driveway enters enters.
Andy, are there, are are you having conversations with the Winnicky? Do they have adjacent and adjacent easement?
Yeah, uh actually, I mean, I think Winnicky has, yeah, thank you, Ken.
We met, um I was contacted by uh, forgive me, I forget the gentleman's name. I I worked with him over at Duchess Planning years ago. And we met uh with him and another member. And we met with him and another member from Winnicky and two members of the HOA Board for the Gardens. And what Winnicky's goal is to extend the sidewalk from the village line down to the property that they have an easement on, that they obtained through the gardens. And their goal is to make a series of trails throughout that, that property. That, that's the property immediately to our west. And they wanted a trail system throughout that property and had that trail system be tied into the village. There, I think there may be, we didn't hear anything else from them. I just heard that, that possibly was a discussion or talk about putting more of a sidewalk on the other side of, of Ryan Cliff Road. But, you know, we went to, we told Winnicky that if they work with the town and so forth, we, we, we will work with them. What they were seeking was a, a trail from the Gardens property through a lower part of our property to connect it over to the sidewalk that would be installed on Ryan Cliff.
Thank you, Ken. I have, so I believe your impact statement essentially asserted that there wouldn't be any traffic impact. I think that's stretching it a little bit. It's hard to imagine, I think you said a hundred and twenty nine parking spaces. Is that correct? Was it a hundred and twenty?
Yep, a hundred and twenty nine parking spaces.
So one has to presume that most of those will be going in and out on a regular basis. I am, I have very, very strong reservations about your main entrance coming in from Aster Drive. I think that road is simply inappropriate for this kind of access. I really believe that we need to be looking at Route three oh eight. I understand it makes the driveway a little longer, but I, I think, I don't, I don't think there's support either at the town board level or in many other places for that being your primary access. And if three oh eight becomes your primary access, I would really like to see that driveway, that main driveway coming in greatly enhanced with landscaping as well. I think it's a long drive, and I just don't want to see a long road of blacktop. So I don't know how others feel, but I just don't, I mean, just this past weekend, the original gates to Aster Drive were reinstalled, given to the town, given to the village, excuse me, by the Verilli family, only reinforcing the historic nature of that drive itself. So I just think it is totally unsuitable. It needs to be revisited.
Melody, this is Jim. I, I can tell you as the town planner, I feel the same way. I put that in the memo to you. I can also tell you that I spoke with Elizabeth, and she has told me that without getting primary access onto Ryan Cliff Road, the, the town board is not going to move this forward. They feel that that is an absolutely vital connection. They don't want to see access coming on Aster Drive. So I think, Andy, I mentioned that to you previously, you've heard that. But, you know, again, the town board has made it pretty clear that this is a nonstarter without that access. So we're going to have to work with, yeah, the town board's, the town is going to have to work with the applicant and, you know, DOT and figure this out, the situation is, but it is definitely a significant issue.
Yeah, a, and I think I mentioned earlier that, you know, if, if, if that's the case, I think we can work with the DOT and, and basically tell them that, that, you know, the town isn't going to permit us to use Aster Drive and we'll, we'll work to make that work. You know, that, that, that the primary access. You know, we can, I think we can make that happen. As far as landscaping is concerned, we haven't even, we've, we, we've got, you know, a few trees that I put on the plan. We'll, we'll get an actual landscape architect involved to, to do a real landscape plan as we progress the project. So we'll, we'll definitely take that into account with, as far as the main entrance is concerned, Melody.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I just don't want to be going on three oh eight and looking at a, a cut up there. I really want it to remain as, we're all looking as it does right now. So to the best of the ability, I understand there will be change, but I think we just need to get that on the table at this point.
I agree, and some stone pillars at some point. Andy, I don't know how far down, close enough to Ryan Cliff Road, but we've done that on some of our other developments, and it's quite nice, right? With lighting and different landscaping near and around the pillars, and then more pines lining the, the driveway as it goes up.
Well, I'm just cognizant, I appreciate all these comments, but of course, part of what we're seeing tonight does not include a landscape plan. And so we really aren't able to comment on that. And I think many of us agree that the landscaping of this will certainly go a long way toward enhancing this project. So we're a little bit caught between a rock and a hard place. We're not sure it's coming, when and how it's coming back to us. But I think, I think there's a great deal of work that needs to go into the landscaping plan for the entire property.
We, we agree, Ben, Chair, and I, it will be a very robust landscape plan, and I look forward to working with you and the board to get your comments once we distribute that plan.
Edna?
I have another question about architectural design. Going through the Kearney website, we see that you have done a number of lots, a lot of apartments in Beacon, Peak Skill, and so forth.
Yes.
Where you have converted existing buildings to affordable housing. And these buildings offer distinctive architecture. And the apartments seem to have unusual lighted space due to their large windows, high ceilings. As I remember, some have balconies. The problem, of course, is that we don't have any such existing buildings. When you look at these apartments, these loft apartments, although the buildings are older and handsome, the, the look actually is quite contemporary. Were you asked to do a not contemporary design?
Before Mario jumps in, I, just a couple of things. The, the buildings actually, believe it or not, the Lofts on Main and Peak Skill, Queen City Loft in Poughkeepsie, maybe some of you visited that with the Zeus Brewery, even West End Lofts in Beacon, those are all actually new construction. We made it look like they were rehabs of existing buildings. The, there was an initiative at the time to try to attract more foot traffic in, in urban centers. And we came up with that model. The model included a preference for artists, affordable artists. And that was used in, in Peak Skill, Poughkeepsie, and West End Lofts. That model is not embraced so much anymore. But the, the design of those buildings is pri, was primarily, primarily used and continued to be used in more urban settings. So I think our lighting package in regards to, you know, lighting of the interior of, of these units, you will find will be quite nice, and our finishes will be quite nice. The two buildings, the first two buildings we did, Lofts on Main and Peak Skill and Queen City Loft in Poughkeepsie were actually steel and concrete buildings. And you just can't build that model anymore. We built it back in two thousand fifteen and sixteen, and we barely got out alive. But you can't build that today, even for, for market rate. But we did it to, to start a model, and we've actually gone upstate with that model now. We have several projects upstate in smaller urban areas and cities that are looking to get more foot traffic and revitalize certain parts of their downtown. We haven't used that model in a more of a suburban, a setting. Mario, I think there were other, a couple of other questions in there on architecture, maybe you can answer.
Yeah, Ken, I mean, you, you made the important point. You know, those were urban buildings, they were infill sites. They were a much larger scale, of course, up to seventy five feet tall in Peak Skill. Hence, concrete and steel. But no, we were not asked to not do a contemporary building to, to answer that question. That was the, this is the style we, you know, this is the style we felt appropriate for this site. And this model we've used on other projects also with the, the two story walk up. They're, you know, they're, they're beautiful apartments. They, they are spacious, and we are at, always at the maximum square footage allowable by the state for our apartments, just to point that out also.
Could I butt in for a minute here, Edna, just for a second to follow up on what you've been saying?
Sure.
And I think as I'm listening to the discussion here, it's becoming clear to me that what's being presented here doesn't represent Rhinebeck. It represents other places with other projects were done in other communities. And as I look at our zoning law, for example, Article Eight, neighborhood infill has very distinctive guidance on how to develop the lands close to the village, including this property here, so that it would be reflective of the village design, the residential areas. I don't see anything like that here. Basically, this looks to me like a residential strip mall, which is one of the things we tried desperately in the comp plan and over the years developing our design guidelines to try to both avoid, and where we do have that already, particularly on Route nine, to try and design it out so that it no longer had that look to it. We do have desired guidelines to use. And as a planning board, we have required people coming before us to use those guidelines in designing structures to be put up in our town. And we have turned down a number of projects because they weren't able to do that. This is the first time we're seeing this. We don't know where it first came from. I realize there are a great many constraints on this property. I strongly suspect the reason this property was chosen for an affordable housing project, we desperately need is the availability of the village water and sewer line. The constraints on the property are, are significant. And perhaps that's why this property, this project can't be built according to the standards we have in our zoning law and our design guidelines, because the property won't permit it. But frankly, I think if this is what affordable housing has to be, we desperately need it, then perhaps we need to acknowledge that there are some things in Rhinebeck that just aren't going to be designed to fit into Rhinebeck, and I think that that would be a shame. And I'd also like to know why the state DOT doesn't want the main entrance for this project to be on Route three oh eight.
Andy can answer.
Yeah, I can't speak to the architecture, but as, the DOT's policy is that if a project has multiple access points, particularly from a local road, they do not permit a curb cut on their highways. So they, they're actually allowing the entrance only into the site would be knowing that, knowing that Aster Drive is available to us. That would be the only way that they could allow that. So we'll need to have some additional conversations with the DOT and, and basically explain to them that the Aster Drive is not going to be available to us, which, you know, hopefully will open up that, that, that avenue for us.
Yeah, and I, I think it's fair for me to say that, you know, the town board has made it clear that, that, you know, they, they want that access on, on Ryan Cliff Road. But if it comes down to it, I think the town board will come back and say, there is no access on Aster Drive, or at best you might get emergency access, because I do believe, and I think others do, that we need that secondary access, certainly for emergency access. So that might be the best we'll come out of it. But I, I don't think you're going to get a full entrance, even, even, you know, vehicular entrance on that Aster Drive entrance, if that's what it takes. The town board has made it pretty clear.
Understood. And honestly, I, I'd like to avoid the disturbance on, on that end as well. So, you know, if we can come up with something to minimize that, I think that would be a good thing.
Is Wells Manor Lane a town road or is just a private road that was designed specifically to serve Wells Manor?
It's a private, it, it's a private road that, that the grant, grantee, which I think was Northern Duchess Hospital, or an affiliate of that, which built Wells Manor, also donated the land to the village of Rhinebeck for the sewage treatment plant. So there was a series of easements there anticipating that they would need access to this property. So it wouldn't be landlocked on, on the Aster roadside. So from, from Aster Drive to where Wells Manor Lane starts, Wells Manor is a private road with a series of right of ways over it and through it. Here you go, yeah.
I think, Andy, maybe we can explain it better, that this line is, I mean, it's a top line. There, there's a dividing line here where the property lines are.
Yeah, so, yeah, you, you've got, you're pointing to the right spot. The, the hatched area over Wells Manor Lane is, is the right of way or easement. I forget what they're calling it for the benefit of this property.
So this eighty unit project would be basically, as, as presented here, would be accessed by a private road, not by a town road, a village road, or a county road. I, this project is the largest residential project proposed in the town of Rhinebeck since nineteen eighty seven, when the Gardens was approved, which of course goes out onto a state road, also Aster. I, I don't, I just don't see how it's even conceivable that something of this size would go onto a private road, then onto a small village road, Aster Drive. I, I just don't see how that's even, can even be conceived of.
Thank you, Michael. Jim, could you go back to the elevation of the buildings? I just wanted to continue with a comment based on what Michael said. For me, what's also contributing to, and it's not my term, it was Michael's term to use, the strip mall, but the amount of blacktop is so detracting. You know, what I, when I look at this, what I see is one big parking lot. And I know we talked about it previously in our pre-conference meeting, and I know that the property is terribly constrained, but I don't see a lot of creativity here in trying to break that up. It just looks like a huge parking lot in front of a storefront, and it's, it's unappealing, in my opinion. Edna, do you have more comments? I'd also want to make sure that there are no comments from other members of the planning board. Craig, Sean, Joe, haven't heard from you. Craig, I heard a little bit from you. But Sean and Joe, any questions or comments? Nope, okay.
I love being put on the spot, Melody.
I'm not trying to put you on this.
No, I, I think, I, I would echo a lot of what was discussed tonight. I think there's obviously a need for this. Um, I think my bigger concern is like, is, is what's outlined tonight, the best for the community, which is what's been communicated tonight. I, I mean, as, as many people know, we need housing. It's, it was recently communicated through Duchess County, we need housing at a lower price point for the community. So I want to kind of try to balance the need for that along with our comments tonight. And I think that's the only thing I have to say.
Okay. Edna, do you have anything else?
Simply that I think that the opportunity is to reduce the footprint of the buildings. You need that, I think, in order to provide more landscaping and more community outdoor space. Obviously, you can do that by reducing units, or you can build up, and I, I would see no reason not to build up. The only other thing is, in, in my looking through the internet, when I'm seeing innovative work, it looks, it's contemporary. Because that's what offers you larger windows, somewhat higher ceilings, you know, a sense of openness. So I would hope that that's not ruled out.
And then to kind of rip off what you just said, like, it just, what I don't see is open landscape. I don't see an opportunity for kids to be able to play. I don't see an opportunity for families to actually, which is what I would assume in many cases, this is going to serve to have a place to call home. I see a lot of hardscapes. I see a lot of hardscape and I see. Um, I see a lot of hardscape, and I think if there's an opportunity to to make this more of a home. For families that could really enjoy this space, um, I I know that's what my kids would want. Um, if I was in in this community.
Just to follow up on that, Jim, if you could show, go back to the site plan, I just wanna kind of. Show uh some of the things that we're trying to do with this with as far as open space is concerned. Um, so I mentioned every single one of these buildings is a walkout basement, so the buildings on the bottom floor have have will have. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mario, we'll we'll have um doorways that open up onto um lawn areas in the back here, so all of these, even. Even in areas where we have um, you know, steep slopes, we're proposing retaining walls so that every single one of these buildings has. Uh, at least a a smaller por- portion of um yard and the bottom uh area here. And then and some of these other buildings were, we're actually cutting, proposing to cut the slope back to provide that lawn area. Um, and as I said, we we are showing um, you know, walking trails, you know, as best we can through here, possibly some additional trails through here. Uh, we haven't gotten that, uh, sorry, you can't see my cursor. Um, on the on the western side of the property. Um, and then also there's the um, you know, there there is a playground proposed, and we can certainly work to to try to provide. Um, a little bit more um. Well, we'll do our best to provide more open space as best we can, um, based on, you know, the the requirements of the site.
Uh, to Andy, to your point, uh, I did fail to mention earlier, all of the uh apartments at the front and rear that are at grade level. Have a walkout patio, uh, a walkout patio, uh. Uh, actually a walkout porch, front and rear. They all have a roof and columns.
Do you have, have you shown us elevations of the rear side of the buildings?
Uh, no, we have not submitted that yet.
So we don't know what that's gonna look like.
Uh, it's right, it's a similar design scheme, but uh, I I don't think we submitted that.
Well, I'm trying to imagine what, you know, I'm trying to visualize what you just described, and I can't.
Okay. Yeah, well, we'll get all the elevations in in the future, of course.
I'd be interested to know what the nature of the view is and also um. What does it smell like?
Well, right, uh, the view, the view is, it's pretty wooded right now, so it's hard to hard to see much. Um, but I think once the trees are cleared, I think you're gonna have a fairly decent view across. Uh, to the west toward the the, you know, across the river, towards the mountains in that direction. Um, I don't think there's gonna be much to obstruct that. Um, as far as the smell is concerned, um, you know, I mean, walking around right now, it smells, there's no, there's no odors to speak of.
Okay, so the proximity to the sewage treatment. Plant is uh is not a factor?
Oh, no, no, I don't know if you've ever been there before or not, but you, I mean, you. Right at the driveway to the to the sewage treatment plant, you don't really smell much.
Andy, can you clarify? Um. I I guess I need a little more clarification on when you were talking about tree removals, opening up. Significant view to the west. Um, I guess I was imagining that the west side of this property would remain wooded. Is that not correct?
Well, because of the. It would, but but well, because of the grade change, Melody. Um, you know, we have, we have tree clearing that we have to do to get the to to build the retaining walls and build the the construct the buildings. So the trees are gonna be removed, but you know, where the buildings are gonna sit, they're gonna s- look over the top of some of the trees that are at the bottom of the hill on the west side of the property. So you're gonna be able to kind of see over top of those in some cases.
The buildings are at one eighty-two and uh you're down at one fifty, one sixty down at the western property line, so.
Exactly.
Okay. Um, well, there's.
John, I have a quick question. This is a referral from the town board. Should we, or do we need to open up the public comment? It might be one or two people here. Do you have a thought on that?
You can do that if you wish. You're not required to.
Okay, I didn't think so. Thank you.
But Jim, I think if you wish to ask if anyone here from the public would like to make a comment, I think it's appropriate.
I think you just did, Melody, so if anyone has a a comment, let's hear from the public. Please let me know, raise your hand or turn on your screen. Not seeing anyone, Melody, but just wanted to put that out there as an option.
All right, John or Jim, any closing comments you'd like to make? I think we're ready to wrap it up for this evening.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I wanted to uh mention is it, I guess, from what I'm hearing from board members is uh. Trying, you know, it uh difficulties in just trying to visualize everything uh and to give, you know, give some consideration if there were. Photo simulations that you might be interested in seeing that in addition to the uh rear elevations of the buildings. Um, you know, those are, you know, that's a tool that's out there for you to get a better idea about what things may look like after the project is built. Um, you know, if you wanted something of view to the project from a vantage point to the west of the project or. Um, views of what the entrances might look like, um. Those are tools that might help you out with that.
I think that's a great idea. Jim, any closing comments?
Yeah, um, you know, again, planning board members, I I do ask if you could, you know, take a look at this, you know, over the next, let's say, two weeks or so before our next planning board meeting in June. Um, provide me with any comments in writing if you can. I'm going to pull all of those together. And try and put it into a memo um that will kind of summarize slash discuss in some way, shape or form. Uh, in about two weeks, and then that memo will be forwarded onto the town board, where they will, they will have those comments. Um, for for their review, and then obviously, as I said, it'll be entered into the public record there. Um, if you think, I mean, we we kind of discussed it earlier, I don't know if we want to circle back really quickly on this. If you don't think, you know, two weeks is enough time to provide those comments to me. Um, I guess we could talk about an extension, maybe you could shoot me an email. Unless you want to do it tonight, Melody, uh, but I think maybe we just move forward, assuming that we can do this in the next two weeks, and if we need an extension, I can reach out to the town board and ask, that would be a. An informal thing again, this is not a public hearing, so there's the. The way we treat this is a little different, uh, we're discussing it publicly, but um. I'll put things together for you kind of in the background. Get it pulled together for the town board.
Is everybody okay with that?
The, is it possible to get the renderings of the back of the buildings in that timeframe before then?
Uh, within, i- is it two weeks?
Yes.
Hey, everyone, this is Justin Lee from Development and Security Party Group. Uh, I'm the rendering guy, in case you were wondering. I'd say a a renderings normally takes right about fourteen days. Um, but we can, we can put the pressure on and try to get it turned around uh within that timeframe.
Yeah, we'll we'll hop on that tomorrow morning and we'll do everything we can, all right? We'll push them, as Justin said, he's he's been able to work his magic in the past and uh. We understand uh how important they are.
Well, and I think also, please consider the things that John's raised in terms of. What is the entrance gonna look like from three oh eight? What's 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 it gonna look like in terms of simulation from the west? Um, I'd like, I'd like that as well, so as close as you can get to getting that all prepared within two weeks would be great.
Melody, I couldn't closing, I think what's really important, I think a project like this is very important to Rhinebeck. But I think community in a project like this is really important to Rhinebeck, and I don't feel like we have enough details to actually build a. See clearly of what this is. Right now, I see a bunch of buildings and a parking lot. And that's all we're seeing as a planning board.
Also, we we um, you know, haven't been to the site, which is always something that's very important when we look at something like this.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That's a good point, Edna. Do we want to talk about a potential site visit?
I think it makes sense.
Let me just, let me just ask a procedural question of John. So John, theoretically, when Kim looked at the timeline for us. Um, we could discuss this at our next meeting, our very next meeting. Would we be able at that time? Would we still have time at that time to suggest we need more time? Or do we need to be doing that now?
I think that if the earlier that you can make the request of the town board, the better, because if. For some reason, the town board's not inclined to grant the extension, then you're gonna have to try to get. Uh, as much done as you can, you know, beforehand. Um, I think, you know, I don't, I I won't, I I don't want the the applicant.
Oh, dear.
We'll give it a second, hopefully it'll come back.
Well, while we're waiting and praying, um. Do, is there a sense that? That we will need more time? Oh, is he back?
Yeah, hopefully, sorry about that um remnants of the bad weather here.
Which, continue. Um.
So Mel- Melody, um, I just found the email, the the sixty days from the date the planning board received, it would be June seventeenth.
June seventh.
So a couple, just a couple of days.
But that would be before we would have to act at the next meeting, correct? Because the twentieth is our June meeting.
Right, we have one on, right, we have one on the sixth and then one on the twentieth.
But the twentieth is too late, right?
It technically, yes, unless you want to ask for a for an extension.
Could I get a sense from planning board members of whether they would like at this point to ask for an extension? Because I do, I do believe that the question that Edna raised about scheduling a site visit would also be something I'd like to see put in place.
I think beyond that, Melody, there's a not, there's, from what we've seen tonight. Speaking for myself, I certainly would not be able to recommend that the town board proceed with this project. Uh, there's just, we, we weren't involved in any of the development of it, and this is all we've seen, and if an applicant came before us and this is all we saw. And then we had to decide to approve or disapprove, recommend or not recommend. We would not do that. We would ask for further information, and I don't think it's unfair of us to ask for sufficient time to do that. Uh, we have a very busy schedule, we're all volunteers, and we want to do a good job. Uh, the town board, I assume, wants an honest opinion from us, and we clearly need a good deal more information. Uh, the renderings usually take two weeks. Well. If it takes twelve days, we have two days to look at it, we're not gonna have time to deal with the information that we're asking for. Under those circumstances, and I think Edna's suggestion of a site visit is also something that we always do for everything that we look at. So if we're seriously going to try and give a recommendation to the town board on the desirability or lack thereof of this project. We need a great deal more information than we have right now, and I think that it would do the town board a service if they recognize that and provide us with that.
Yeah, I I I would concur with that, and um. Uh, you know, I I think the 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 shape and nature of this project. I- is very important to um the town going forward, and uh. I I just, I I think it needs adequate time for review.
Is someone willing to make a motion to uh request? Um, an extension from the town board? I think that's what we need here, isn't it?
So, Melody.
Or I'll second.
Have a motion, a second. I I I'm assume I'm going down the right legal road here, John.
Yes, you're fine. I I think that it would be best if the motion included a particular time period for the extension, so that everybody. Understands what is being asked for.
What do you think is reasonable?
What is the time it takes to get the information we need? I guess this is the bigger question, Melody.
Mm-hmm.
Is it just enough of time to take us out to the next, the second meeting, not the next meeting, or is it more time than that is the question?
Just thinking of the materials we need.
If I heard Jim correctly. Given the referral, we would have until June seventeenth.
I think another thirty days from there might be appropriate.
Is it worth asking the people that are representing the development of how long would it take to get materials that we're requesting in front of us?
Yeah, thank you, um. Mario, Andy, I put you on the spot. We can have, we can turn this around by uh, well. Before, at least five days before your June twentieth meeting.
I I guess I just wanted to have a little clarification in terms of. Exactly what additional information um is being requested. Is it just the photo simulations um and building elevations? Is there any?
Yes, and the entrance.
Information we're looking for and the entrance?
The entrance of a Rycliff, uh, let's, let's assume, you know, Murphy was an optimist and so is Carney, so let's assume. That the DOT is gonna cooperate with us, and let's, so let's uh design a an entrance there with um, you know. Something that is is appealing, okay? That's one thing. I think the uh the rear renderings are another. Um, and we'll huddle up to see if we can incorporate some of the other. Um, comments, I'm a little hesitant to do that because some of the the. Design has been a result of comments, so uh, but let's say that's the extent of it, Andy and Mario.
I think landscaping, may I chime in and say landscaping?
Can we get that, Andy, by the June fifteenth?
I think, yeah, I think we can do that by June fifteenth, yeah.
All right, so if we get, if we get it to the board by June fifteenth, uh, is it fair, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, that, yep. We get it to you five days before the June twentieth meeting, and then um. Discuss it at the June twentieth meeting, and then um. I don't know how long Jim would have to pull together a memo after that.
We have to respond to the town board if we don't ask for an extension no later than June seventeenth.
Right, but I I think, but what uh the council was asking is to put a date on it and um.
I think the date was for the extension.
Right, for the extension, and then the question was, well, how long will it take our team to come up with the information? And I think we, we think we can pull it together by June fifteenth and have it. To the board five days before your June twentieth meeting, and um, then I guess the question is how long? After the June twentieth meeting, would uh, would you need to actually uh make comment and? Uh, get a memo to the town board?
So, Ken, that might work as long as we get an extension, if if the town board were to say, give the extension, and that timeline doesn't work, just put it out there.
Yeah, I agree.
So are we extending this to our first meeting in July to actually make a recommendation? For our second meeting in July?
Right, so first July meeting is July fifth, um, the second one is is July eighteenth, so. It's, it's a recommend, yeah, I guess it is a recommendation, it's a, it's a memo of comments, questions and and items for the town board.
Can we make the June twentieth meeting, Jim, or is that?
I I did.
I I'm still, I'm still back at the. Asking uh the town board to extend. That's what I thought we were talking about here.
We should extend, yes.
And I think, and I think John's comment was that our. Request for an extension should tell the town board how long we want the extension to be. So do we want to extend it another thirty days?
Thirty days, based upon the information.
Thirty days would get us two more meetings, correct? Like, to potentially get back.
That's the way, I think so. Jim, is that correct?
No, no, well, no. Um, I'd have to check the calendar, but May sixteenth to June twentieth. We may come up a couple short. I think we need to ask for something through May twenty, or through June, I'm sorry, through through June. I don't know, twenty fourth, twenty fifth, give a couple of days.
There's no magic to it have to be a round number, you know, it just. Has to be enough of an extension to include two more meetings, so we can.
Yeah, I I would ask for an extension to the end of June, I think, just to cover, just to cover the basis, if we think that'll work, so the thirtieth, thirtieth.
We, Jim, we need to make it to a point where the planning board meets. The planning board has to sit down and decide what to recommend to the town board, and we're not gonna do that. And the end of June.
And then Jim has to write it up.
Exactly.
Well, yes. So it's the first week in July at minimum, correct?
At minimum, I would say yes, and maybe the second one, because this is gonna be, you're not only gonna be doing, working on this, you're gonna be working on. Brassmere, uh, you're gonna be working on a number of other projects, and you're gonna be, you're gonna be bombed under. We have Red Wing, we're with all these things. We've got to consider the fact that. We have a lot we're doing right now, and we need time. with all these things, we've got to consider the fact that we have a lot we're doing right now, and we need time.
It, but it also doesn't mean that it definitely goes to that second meeting in July, it just means that we're giving ourselves the buffer.
Exactly, exactly.
And then, we don't want to have to go back and ask them for a second extension.
No.
Gretchen, just let me know, the second June town board meeting, and I don't know what their schedule is for discussing this again, to be honest, but the second town board meeting is June twenty seventh, for the month of June, so again, if we think moving out to the end of June works, I would say the end of June, we'd have the June sixth and June twentieth meeting, I guess could always ask for another one, or if you want to go longer, that's entirely up to you, but if, if you need me to do something, I'll, I'll get it done, one or another.
We need to extend it to a meeting date of our meeting, so that we can make our recommendation and give you enough time to prepare the resolution for that recommendation.
Right, I think we've extended past the meeting date, so if, if the, the second meeting, you know, two more meetings would be June twentieth, so that's why I'm saying the end of June, that would give me a week to wrap it all together, if we went to the June twentieth meeting, it wouldn't take me that long, I think once we talk, it'll just take me a couple days, but if, if the town board is gonna discuss it on June twenty seventh, for instance, and we got an extension to do twentieth, which is only three days past the deadline. You know, give me a couple days to pull it together, and just get your individual sign offs on it, I think that would be fine, if you think that in June works.
When is the next town board meeting?
Uh, June thirteenth, according to what Gretchen just told.
No, we won't.
I'm sorry, not June thirteenth, that's the next June meeting, when is the next town board meeting, I don't know, I have to look.
Well, I'm trying to get to, if we make a, a request tonight, we have to put into play exactly when they'll take it up.
I don't know when they're taking it up. I don't know, Ken or Andy, do you know, if you're on their schedule, I don't know, off the top of my head.
No, we don't know.
Gretchen, do you know when the next town board meeting is?
May twenty third, according to the website.
So the earliest they could give us an extension would be May twenty third, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if they have to do it, if they have to do it at a meeting, yeah.
I don't know if they have to do it at a meeting or not.
Again, it's a referral.
Yeah, it's thirty days, so.
Yeah, it's in the statute, I would like to see them do, do the extension at a meeting, so to make a record.
Yep, yeah, I think it makes sense.
Well, I'm fine with an extension to June thirtieth. Does that satisfy everybody?
I don't quite see the function of June thirtieth, but we don't meet then.
Well, John just said, John said we didn't have to have an arbitrary date.
Michael, it's, it's to get us to our second, past our second June meeting, give me a couple days to write it up after that second June meeting, that's all.
Well, I guess the one question I have is, if it usually takes fourteen days for them to put things together, I mean, are we gonna have enough time to really think this through and work over it? We just don't want to come up short, that's all.
Well, make an alternative recommendation for dates.
I would have thought the first meeting in July, and if we don't need to go that far, we don't have to go that far, but at least we have the opportunity.
That'd be Tuesday, July fifth.
Yeah, we'll be in a holiday mood and everything, it'll be great.
I'm out of town on the fifth, not that you need me, but you'll probably be meeting in person at that point.
We'll see.
Yeah, I doubt it.
I do too, Mi- Michael has made a mo- Michael, are you making a motion to ask for an extension to carry us to July fifth?
Yes.
I have a motion, could I have a second?
Second, Sean.
Thank you, Sean, all those in favor?
Hi.
Posed extensions, Jim, could I ask you to work with the applicants to set up some dates for a possible site visit?
Absolutely, and would you like me to reach out to the town board to make the request on your behalf for the extension?
Please do. And who, Ken, who do you want us to contact to arrange for a site visit?
Uh, Andy will make, make the arrangements.
Okay, and I think.
I'll be up there as well.
Okay, I think planning board members will do as we have in the past on some of these larger projects. We'll try and get some dates from you, and we'll schedule it so that everybody can come at the same time.
That's good.
Good, Melody.
Okay.
We, Melody, I have a question for Jim, if I may.
Yep.
Um, I know, Jim, you've got a lot on your plate, but I was wondering whether it might be in terms of procedure going forward over this period that we have coming up, whether you could tie together, even if it's just sort of in bullets, the sort of universe of information that was asked for by the planning board tonight, and provide that to the applicant, I guess what I'm after is so that, I think it would be good for them to have some certainty in terms of, you know, something in writing from the board saying, okay, this is what we need so that as they spring into action, they'll have a specific list to focus on. So I, I think that's a good suggestion, if you're, you've got the ability to do it, or the capacity, I should say.
Yeah, I think they heard, well, I'll work on that, I'll talk with Gretchen, we'll look through the notes, and we'll pull that together, and then I'll coordinate with a couple people, that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the suggestion, to make sure I didn't miss anything in my notes, so.
Okay, everybody good?
I think so, thank you for your time this evening, and the robust conversation, thank you.
It was a great conversation, we look forward to speaking with you again.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two more referrals. The proposed local law, the amendment to the zoning code regarding cell towers, Jim, do you want to walk us through this?
I can do that. Cell towers and vehicle access requirements, so there, the, this one is a local law change that will permit a cellular tower to be placed in the RP zoning district. It's really for the need that, there's, there's very little coverage in that area, if you're ever driven through there, you know, yourself, calls can drop, if you're driving up that way, so the idea is that the RP being, you know, the zoning district, that is the Office Research Park, it's a very large parcel, provides flexibility in citing, and also has pretty substantial and, and, you know, reasonable standards for screening and things like that of the buildings, and you all know this, we've looked at it with Stamp, Ruggies, and others. The idea is to allow a communication facility or tower to be placed on a property within the ORP, and then it would be subject to all the existing self-communication, I'm sorry, I should say, communication facility and tower regulations that exist today, so it's really just allowing it to be placed in that zoning district. I personally don't see any issues with it, I think it makes sense from a location perspective, both for me. Is there a site in mind already, based upon this recommendation? I don't know for sure exactly where on the site, no, but I, I do believe that there's a discussion about the desire to put one there, both by the town and the property owner. Where, where exactly on the property, I don't, we haven't seen anything officially.
When you're talking about the ORP, you're talking about the Ruggie site?
Well, Ruggie owns most of it, yeah, there are a couple other parcels, but I would assume that we'd go on something that's bordered by Middle Road and, and nine G. Right, so on that Ruggie, essentially on the Ruggie's triangle, I assume is where we'd be looking. Some of the site location will be dependent on, you know, the needs of the facility, the, the, the tower, you know, providers and, you know, obstructions with trees and other things, but yeah.
From a aesthetic standpoint, would it be wise to put in a, in a recommendation to the town board that that one portion of the ORP that's on the north side of Middle Road where that event center was planned not be eligible because you would never screen it, it would be, you know, rather ugly standing up there, whereas the ORP makes perfect sense because you can easily lose it inside there. At that, at least that one little piece.
I think you're, that's a good suggestion, good catch.
It is, the only problem is then we're not rezoning it for the ORP for, for a particular zone, we'd be rezoning it for particular parcels, that becomes more problematic.
Well, we're just giving them our opinion back, right?
Yeah, and certainly, if, you know, again, it's gonna have to fall within all the standards of the existing code for communications towers, so someone came in with one on that property, the planning board could absolutely say it's not appropriate, it's not screened properly and all that kind of thing, but generally, the uses will follow the, you know, zoning district. Unless we come up with criteria for where they could be located, but then we'd have to put that into the, into the communications facility and tower regs themselves, which we're proposing to do, this is essentially just adding the use to the use table.
But when we write back to them on this, can we just not, can we just note that this question came up and we?
Absolutely, I'm just kind of throwing out there the, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think that you definitely have to do that because I think you, you have to remember that for telecommunications facilities are entitled in many cases to relaxed versions of the zoning law because of the federal commu-, you know, because of federal laws, so I think any concerns that you have with respect to those kinds of things need to be stated at this, you know, as part of your recommendation, because the zoning law will apply, but in other words, the ability to be able to get variances away from the zoning law are subject to relaxed standards under the FCC regulation, so just bear that in mind.
Other comments?
When, when they would come back to put up the tower, would it come back in front of us, like? So at that time, could we require screening, like, do we have to do that now is my question, or is it when it comes back in front of us that we worry about screening and sight lines and the such?
Yep, it, it, yeah, it'll fall under the existing code requirements, just like a tower in any of the districts where it's permitted now. So depending on what's proposed and where. Yeah, I haven't actually reviewed a cell tower down, so that'll be a new one for me. I don't know, last time was cell towers built in town, probably been several years.
Anyone else?
That's part one.
I was, go ahead, what's part two?
Uh, part two of that same law, so there, there are technically two laws that were put together, one is community solar, the other is this communications facility and tower, and then particular access requirements, so the cell tower and access requirements are put into one law. The access requirements are a local law change that would require access from developments to be from the highest classification road unless it's not feasible, feasible, reasonable, or safe. There is, you saw tonight with the discussion of the workforce housing, there are situations where we may get act, requests for access to a lower classification road, generally speaking, I don't think that makes sense. There's some concern about that potential, you know, in the ORP, so this, this is going to, you know, look at that as well. Pretty much anywhere that, you know, if we have access to a state road, access for vehicular for, for vehicles should be taken from the higher classification road in most instances, unless, again, it's not feasible, reasonable, or safe. I don't have any concerns with it, I, I think generally speaking, this makes a lot of sense. There are two minor changes that need to be made, the county caught in their review. I, when I drafted this for the town board, put in some references to the ORP, they should not have been in there, it's a more general thing for all develop. So those references will be taken out, and those were detailed in my memo. So those are the, those are the first two that are combined together into one little law.
You have something for us to look at, or are we proving something here tonight to go back, or what?
Well, it's a referral, right, I don't have, actually didn't put together or for a language, I should have done that. So I guess I'm just, I guess I'd ask if there is thoughts on, on these, and whether you were, you know, or further back saying that you generally agree that they are okay, because I don't have any draft language, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Missed that.
Um, so everybody in general agreement?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, so by consensus, we're gonna ask Jim to write up a response, does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, and last one, Jim, proposed local law, community solar?
Yes, so this is a local law, which will revise the existing solar energy system law in the code to add community solar as a new solar use in the town of Rhinebeck. Community solar, well, it is kind of a large-scale solar, it's actually a different operation than what's permitted in the existing large-scale solar regs in that it is a community-owned system where individuals and businesses can purchase the panels and own the system. They're also typically a bit larger than what is currently permitted in the zoning code. And after quite a bit of work with the town board and input from them, it was decided, it's determined that in order to permit these types of uses and systems, we had to modify some of the existing regulations to allow for these to be put in. The current draft permits them to cover up to the maximum impervious coverage permitted in a particular zoning district. And, well, I don't necessarily believe solar panels are exactly the same as impervious coverage or something, so like a parking lot. I do think that that measure seems to make sense, it actually is consistent as well with the model ordinance that's put out by NACERTA for solar panels, that the panel should cover no more than the impervious coverage of the underlying zoning district. We've also provided changes to permit more flexibility in the design of a community solar system. And because it is a desirable element to be placed in the town and built in the town, and it provides for local ownership, there are some trade-offs that are being done that, you know, may allow for the potential for some additional tree removal, and some other environmental factors that would change slightly, but those trade-offs are being done to bring in this green energy, they're being done because the system is owned by locals or can be owned by locals, it's, it's owned by individuals, businesses. And the new law also for this does encourage multiple uses to be put on the site, and the code now, it's, it's an allowance, this code is trying to encourage that, so things like agriculture being used in and around solar panels. It also encourages consideration of development of a microgrid and battery backups, which were comments the planning board gave me several months ago, when we saw an initial kind of first cut at some ideas for this. And I've also included a tree replacement program to offset the loss of any trees over six inch DBH, which would be at the discretion of the planning board, so if we do have a system come in and it does result in substantial tree removal, the idea here is that the planning board could request a tree replacement program to be pulled together, what exactly that would be is something we'd have to discuss, we haven't done it before, but very often those can be street trees planted on other places on site where the solar panels are, it could be a street tree program, people could plant trees in town parks or other places that have been dedicated and identified as a place for plantings, so when we do have some removal of these trees, we try and have offsets in other locations. So we're really trying, well, we are allowing for a little bit more flexibility, trying to provide those offsets and, and make sure that those trade-offs are minimizing any additional, you know, environmental changes from what the law holds now.
Am I to understand, and I think this is it, that the solar panels would be basically limited to the maximum lot coverage for a specific property based upon the zoning district within which that lot is located? Is that, okay, I think one little problem I've, I've encountered, and it's just an edit thing, I believe in the District of Area and Bulk Regulations, it says the minimum lot coverage. And I thought it needs to be corrected, because if someone wanted to come out and shoot something down like this, they'd have a good technical argument that they have no way to really say how big this can actually be because of that, so that just needs to be changed in the area and bulk regulations.
That is a type law that's been in the code for a long time, it's, it's been on the books as a change that's needed, is one of the general changes for the code and, and as a whole, because it affects the whole bulk table, so yes, that's.
Throw that one in there with this solar law, and by the way, correct that.
Yep, we could definitely look into that. And if not, we'll do it some other time, because that, that's an issue for everything, potentially.
I have a couple of questions on this.
Go ahead.
On page two, near the end of the second paragraph, partials shall not be less than ten acres of developable land defined as land that excludes natural features that can't be utilized for development of community, community solar. That just seems kind of vague. A point that I wanted to make further on where it deals with the height limitation is, I don't think this should rule out pole-mounted solar, which of course is much more efficient, much more productive. And pole-mounted solar is much more adaptable to unusual terrain. So if there, if pole-mounted solar is included, then it makes that phrase even more questionable.
Where, where was that language, I just pulled it up on the screen.
It is page two, look at the second paragraph, start three lines up from the end second paragraph. Parcel shall not be less than ten acres of developable land.
Yes.
Defined as land that excludes natural features, it's just kind of circular.
Okay. I'll take a look at that.
Would it be a case of, you know, saying net density, because we do define net density and gross density in the, uh, in Article thirteen in the zoning law, would that be of a help?
At least it would be specific.
Yeah, so one of the things that was done with this law is that we integrated in community solar into the existing large-scale solar rules. That may be a carryover of some language from before, I'll take a look at that. And see if there's some, yeah, tweak we can make.
Further down on the same page, uh, you're exempting minimum lot with infrontage requirements. I, I'm just wondering why they're, they're not so terribly restrictive and we're talking about a large array of solar, why not keep those in place?
Those, uh, for a, already exists in the code for solars, for large-scale solar. That's not a new, that's not a new addition. So again, what, what we did is integrate in allowances for community solar while keeping the existing, uh, large-scale solar regs as, as they exist, so um, for here, it originally said at least site created for the exclusive purpose of development of a solar power plant shall be exempt from the following requirements, we just put in community solar, um. The rationale being, again, that we're, we're trying to integrate in community solar within the solar power plant regs.
Okay.
Ninety, ninety-five, ninety-seven percent of this is exactly the same as what's in the code now, again, just integrating in some, some changes, uh, for community solar.
Jim, is there a site in mind? A lot of times this is very written around who's going to benefit from it.
This, this is specifically going into, um, the zoning districts that are listed here. So they can be in, you know, HP twenty, RA ten, R five, or Gate North, Business Park RL five, essentially all the districts that, uh, large-scale solar is permitted in today.
But Sean is asking, is there a certain parcel already in mind for this?
There've been, there've been discussions about the potential for the ORP.
Okay.
Are we privy to that information?
What's that?
Are we privy to that information?
Well, there's no proposal yet, I mean, there's, you know, it's, there's no, there's nothing official, um, it's just that the the desire came forward, uh, someone was looking at that site and, um, there was the desire by the town board to add community solar to the large-scale solar. Um, but it'll be permitted in any of the zoning districts that large-scale solar is currently permitted.
So I guess what we're asking tonight is for us to make a judgment without having all the information now.
Well, it's a rezoning, I mean, we do rezonings all the time without knowing whether there's something specific coming in. Um, we're not approving a project, any project that came in would come back to the planning board, this is a rezoning to allow community solar in the town, uh, essentially is, is a separate type of use of, of a large-scale solar power plant, which is already permitted. Uh, it's not like we're introducing a use that doesn't exist today in the code, it's just a different ownership model and, and potentially sized, uh, operation than what is permitted with the solar power plant. But again, like I say, ninety-five, ninety-seven percent of this code is exactly the same as what's in there today.
All right, I have a couple more, shall I move ahead?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, page three, the bottom of the second paragraph. It seems to me, if you go up four lines from the bottom, which starts, this section is not intended to regulate dead, decaying, or dangerous trees that are identified, it's blah, 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 blah. It seems to me that that entire sentence should go at the end of this paragraph. Otherwise, it looks like removal of trees over six inches in diameter will require an applicant to provide a tree replacement program, even if they're in a forestry operation, it's just confusing.
Okay, the second paragraph, I'm just trying to find it, sorry to delay this, um.
Right at the top.
On page.
Page three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, second paragraph down, okay, I got you.
So just the sentence that reads, this section is not intended. My suggestion is put it at the end of the paragraph.
Okay.
And then if you look at your parentheses right there, C-section one twenty-five dash forty-seven dot twenty-one, I think it's actually one twenty-five dash forty-seven dot twenty, if you look ahead to page six.
I'm just taking some notes here, all right, so one twenty-five, forty-seven, twenty-one.
So it's twenty on page six that says, subject to the discretion of the planning board, a tree replacement program may be required.
Yep.
Also, going back to page three, where you make that statement, uh, you say removal of trees over six inches in diameter at breast height will require, and on page six, you say may require. And then going down on page three, maybe I'm confused. I, it looked to me like you had a duplication in A and B, but they are separate, right, one is for solar power plants and one is for community solar?
Correct.
Okay.
It's essentially, it's, it's very similar, but they had to be separated out for the purposes of what we're doing here.
Okay. On page five, excuse me, number fifteen, where you're restricted to a height of fifteen feet above ground level. I don't think that would accommodate pole-mounted solar, and I really think that you should accommodate pole-mounted solar.
This was not intended to be pole-mounted, it was intended to be ground-mounted, um, as you can see that, you know, that's throughout here, we'll have to, I'll bring that back and talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I see no reason to rule out pole-mounted when it's much more efficient. Also allow you to get underneath it easily in mode.
I think this just backs up, Jim, that this is written for a specific project that's not privy to our information right now.
No, it really wasn't, honestly, it was written to minimize the amount of change in the code to allow for community solar, there was no real consideration of other types that may come in in the future, it's utilizing what's out there now, um, solar is changing quickly and we don't know what may come next. Um, you know, it, it's, this is probably going to be amended in a couple of years again, if things change again, it's entirely possible, um. But this is intended now to essentially allow a community solar option of what's allowed by our solar power plant code, potentially a different operational use. But, but a similar, similar to what's there, so it, we didn't discuss the ideas of different types of, of, um, you know, new technology, different technology that wasn't in the existing code, it was, it was really merely to just put in this community solar operation and allowance.
And getting back to something that Edna said about the, uh, one twenty-five, forty-seven, I think it's supposed to be letter I and then twenty. Because there's no twenty-one. And I is the only section that goes up to twenty.
Well.
There's a twenty-one on page six.
Right. Yeah, this, these, this is twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, right here. I'll take a look at the references. Not a problem.
Only a couple more. Um, on page six, number twenty-one and twenty-two both have the phrase, as long as said relief does not require a variance. It makes it sound like if a variance is required, then the planning board does not have the discretion that is discussed. So I, I think what it wants to say is the planning board has discretion except for issues that involve a variance or words to that effect. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I, I see what you're saying, I read a little differently, but I, I hear what you're saying, but yeah, that's the intent is that, you know, we're, we're saying here, the planning board has the discretion to do this, but they don't have the discretion to grant a variance, if that's what would be needed, so, yeah, we're on the same page, I'll take a look.
Yeah, that's it.
All right.
Anyone else? Okay, Jim, do you feel you have sufficient information to summarize this?
Yes, I've, I've got some things to take a look at and we'll go back with some, some comments, um, questions, talking about the allowance for pole-mounted solar. A couple, uh, things I may need to change, um, taking a look at some wording changes. Yes.
All right, planning board members, are you comfortable, again, by consensus, since we don't have anything before us, for Jim to go back and, um, create notes and things to go back to the town board?
Yeah.
Everybody okay with it?
I am.
Yes.
It's a terrible task, Jim, but, you know, you've, you've got it, so, thank you for all your hard work, I know there was a lot to cover. Um, is there anything else needs to come before the planning board? If not, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, once again, I hate to keep thanking you for hanging in, but I don't know what else to say except thanks.
Thank you, Melody.
Take care.
Bye.
Bye.